Call the meeting to order, can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any, before we get into the zoning workshop, which is why we're here early tonight, is there any comments from the public on the zoning workshop items? Yes?
Nancy Bryan, two comments. One, I would suggest that in your goal to eliminate all offices eventually on Main Street, that perhaps this board should do a statistical analysis of how many offices actually are on Main Street. You might be quite surprised. The other thing that you want to know is that once you do not allow an office to go into a building, once one office moves out, you will probably devalue that property. And I would take a guess that some of the property owners on Main Street would not be happy with that zoning change. And we know that from personal experience, I'm not making that up. The other thing I have a concern with is that under the private zoning changes, all separate local laws, I would, because obviously I know you don't have to answer me, but my question for this board would be, why are we not having these four items take the normal course of the way that we do business in this town? And that would be to go to the zoning board of appeals, which is the way we should be doing this with properties that do not meet zoning. Let them go to the planning board, then let them go to the zoning board of appeals, instead of now having them wait and wait for a possible zoning change with the town, which may not benefit the residents in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. So, okay, so the point of being here tonight, so the goal was to basically look through the zoning memo that we have here, that, to basically put it into different buckets. Buckets where the town attorney will develop a local law for the certain items that need to move right away. Then for a bucket that needs more discussion, and then another bucket for things that are on pause or the board's just not going to consider at this time. So that's the goal right now, so we can kind of give Steve some direction, so that hopefully in April, we can start to move on the things that we can move on. We can have more discussion on the items that we want to have more discussion on, and then we can also notify some of the applicants that we're not considering them at this time. So, first up, we have the revisions to the GC zoning. I kind of want to, so I think, no one is saying to eliminate offices and restaurants. I think that's a mischaracterization that was absolutely not stated. We're looking to clean up the use table.
Well, restaurants, that's true for it. No, offices, the proposal was to go to more of a retail in the GC.
Right, that's what I understood.
But again, it's just a proposal.
No, I would, so, that's, my understanding is that-
I misunderstood you. I thought you said this last week. That's why I was thinking the same thing.
No, absolutely not. I mean, I think this is a, this was something that the planner suggested, if you want to move to a more retail and restaurant. But we have a lot of, you know, we currently have, what, let me see, we have insurance, I believe, we have global securities, we have, no, there was never any proposal to do that. This was a suggestion by the planner, that she put in here to clean up the use table.
No, I understand that.
I never said that we should remove-
Right, I'm just saying, there might have been a miscommunication, and I think that, I know I walked away with thinking that as well.
Yeah. No, that was never, this is a suggestion by the planner, because we said we want to modernize the GC district, and she came up with some options to modernize the GC district.
Are we going to ever, like, if you recall, the last time we did a zoning update, we actually had the planner here, we had the community here, and I know it took a while, but people actually hammered out some of their thoughts. Are we going to ever do any of that?
Yeah, so the planner, yeah, so the planner will be coming, but she wanted us to sort through some of the different issues, and then, yes, during the public hearing process and during, but we're having-
Not before a public hearing, we wouldn't have-
Could do it either way.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, like, that's really, like, right there.
Jimmy, I don't mean to sponsor this line or anything.
I'm just trying to understand the process.
But you could go three ways. You could have, and pay for it, I might add, you know, Lang and Tully to go through every one of these and come in and speak to you on them. But we've already gone over them kind of broadbush, and you probably are not going to be interested in some of them. Or maybe you are, maybe you want to have them come in and talk to you on all of them. But what they wanted was, kind of prune this down to, speak to us on this one, speak to us on this one, that one we're not interested in, that one we think we got, we don't need anymore on, and then you can have them in. Now, if you want to have them in before you introduce the local law, that's fine. If you want to have them in after the local law is introduced, that's fine too. But, you know, they want some guidance, as opposed to coming in and speaking to you on every one of these, because-
Okay, I'm just sorry, that was what I was used to the last time that we-
Well, we did that during a comp plan process where everything was open on the table.
Exactly.
This is not a comp plan process.
Then we did have some zoning, like, changes as well, if I recall.
We did zoning changes per the comp plan, and that was very broad-
Yeah, they're, these are much narrower. They aren't as far ranging as what was coming down the bike last time.
I mean, we're only looking at making some tweaks. So, yes, so she had asked us to narrow it down in whatever direction we decided to go, and she's happy to come in and to present, to give much more information on, but she wants some guidance. Because if you look at the use table for the GC district, there's like 800 words here, so.
Do you want to go through them one at a time? Do you want to just kind of throw it open to the board to discuss? What do you want to do?
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, yes.
Can I, I mean, if it's all right, I'd like to just kind of go through. The first bullet point, right, site plan approval for the bars, breweries, right, with the word "on-site alcohol consumption," right, and all that. Are we stipulating that these businesses or these properties, they have a liquor license?
Well, I don't know that you have to stipulate to it, but I would think that it's required in order to-
Right, because, again, I just want to make sure it's, you know, we don't have businesses setting up for it.
Well, you can't. By law, you have to get a license from the SLA. They have a process that requires 30-day municipal notification.
Okay.
So we, so as soon as a restaurant or bar would apply for a liquor license, we get notified, and then, we've never, though, by the way, have taken them up on that 30-day, we've always waived it. But that doesn't mean we have to. If we see that there's a problem with the project, and we want to require the 30-day notification and put them through some different steps, we can. We've never done that before.
Right. No, they're just coming to my attention, there are a couple right now that are operating, and I don't know the regulations, but they do have alcohol at their business. And I just, it just didn't realize it, that it's really not in compliance. But we'll talk about that, because-
I mean, that's a code enforcement issue, not an issue for the town.
Okay, because I thought, I thought it was approved, but I kind of, it's not. So I did check into the code compliance, and it's not. So we'll have to discuss that.
Sure.
On this one, for example, one of the things we've been talking about is putting in specific definitions for eating places and drinking places, which will encompass restaurants and bars, and try to avoid any overlap between, to the extent you can. But if this board decides, we want to see breweries approved, we want to see cideries approved, those are the type of things that we'll bring in Kristin, and we'll work toward definitions, and talking about appropriate bulk requirements, parking requirements, et cetera, et cetera. And we can start developing that if you decide, but if you look at Main Street and decide, I don't want breweries on it, I don't want cideries on it, there's no point in us doing it. So one of the things you're here for tonight is to try to figure out, and maybe you need more time, as Josh said. Maybe you want to put this off to the next meeting, talk about it, but that's up to you. But what we're here to, tonight is to talk about, on each of these, you want to move forward, like your bucket analogy, or do you want to put it off to longer, or do you want to just discard it, or at least say we're not going to work on it now? So, that's what we're trying to do, go through these and say which bucket does it go in.
Yeah, and I have nothing else, like, for example, the art houses, right, they have an opening, right, they're going to have, you know, alcohol there, which, because that's part of the culture of going to an opening, with wine and cheese and all that. That's why I'm asking these questions.
But you'd have to get a liquor license if you wanted to serve it.
Okay.
But it won't be a bar or a restaurant, it'll be a, I don't know what it would be, an event that happens to serve liquor. And that's something, if we wanted to find art houses or whatever, we might want to allow that as an accessory to the use.
Yeah, well, that would be over in the permitted accessory use section.
But first, you got inside if you want, art houses and playhouses and museums in the GC or not. So that's for you to talk about.
And then, I think, you know, the real, you know, the one big thing here is if you look at number 11, which is the uses by special permit.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry, you're on the chart. Just kidding.
Yeah, I'm looking.
I'm looking at his document, so.
No, I gave out the chart.
Was that one?
Number 11. It's this one. You guys got this package last time.
Yes, we did. I was trying to steal this for a second. I'm sorry, I just went right straight to the document that Mr. Gadda gave us. So maybe I put it here. Why don't you read 11 and I'll sort.
Sure. Number 11 is the uses by special permit. On-site alcoholic beverage licenses, discotheques, cabarets, dance, or live entertainment establishments, whether or not incidental or accessory to some other permitted use. It's got a star next to it, which means that it requires special permit by the town board. So what we were proposing to do is just, let's just get rid of that whole section. So, we're going, we're not going to allow the uses, those specific uses, but the alcohol beverage license is, will become an as-of-right use. Like, you won't have to come to the town board to get a special use permit to open a bar or open a restaurant that serves alcohol in the GC district. Because you're already going to the SLA to get a permit, and that process already-
Just for those uses.
Yes, just for restaurants and bars, yeah. Exactly, yeah. You already have to go to the SLA, there's already a 30-day municipal review that we, you know, if we want a review, we can choose not to waive it, like we always do, if we have an issue with a project. But that would make it, you know, because right now, we have this weird situation where we've got this group of uses that we really never use, and then we also have, you know, restaurants and bars having to come to us. And, you know, it creates a longer process when in reality, they can kind of go through the, you know, through the planning board process, and then go to the SLA to get their liquor license. So we're just trying to remove a step, which I think is reasonable.
A confusing step.
Yes, exactly, because they have to come here, and then they're also go to the planning board, and then to the SLA. So I would propose getting rid of that. Yeah, I think you got it now.
I got it, yeah.
So if you look at, I don't know, so we're in the GC district right now, the GC use regulations table. So there's number 11, and I would propose getting rid of that. Then you move on to delete beauty parlor, because there's already beauty shop. So we basically have two terms for the same thing. So this was an example of the planner suggesting that we just have, you know, one definition, and then we define that definition. She then recommended delete offices and restaurants and essential services. And, you know, look, we have quite a few offices on Main Street. They've, well, yeah, I mean, we're certainly not going to get rid of restaurants. I don't know what essential services is, we probably have to, probably somewhere in the definition.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, you wouldn't be getting rid of restaurants, you're just replacing the term with eating or drinking place.
Yeah, it's a more broader definition, so that's-
Offices, we would be getting rid of, if you're interested in doing that.
No, but it's, that was a recommendation she made, because she felt like, if you wanted to go in a certain direction. But we have a lot of offices on Main Street, they've been there a long time. So, to me, they help stabilize Main Street. Doesn't make sense to hear.
Especially during the day, because you have restaurants, and you have things going on during the day.
Yeah, I mean, I think the key thing here is that these were, we asked her to look at this to come up with recommendations.
Is it Kristin's recommendations?
Well, in ours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is, if you recall, we had a, she was here last year, we first started putting this together, and then she went and she further looked at it, and she made some more recommendations. And then Steve put the memo together, and then here we are going over it. So that's-
Josh, I'm sorry, I kind of lost track here. Just so I have some clear direction of this. The first bullet point under GC, which recommends additional uses in the GC of bars, breweries, and cideries, where's, is that, we want to do this, we need more time, or we don't want to do this? Where are we on that?
I mean, I would like to add those uses into the uses permitted by right.
So your question is, do you want us, is something you want us to go further on, or you don't want to act on? Is that the question you were asking?
Yeah, the next step, as I understand it, is to have our office draft up a proposed local law with the zoning changes the board is prepared to act on now. And we'll present that to you, and if you want us to put in a provision saying we're going to add breweries and cideries to the list of uses permitted subject to site plan approval in the GC, we'll do that. But if you don't want that, then we won't do that. But I don't know what you want right now.
Yeah, this is basically, you know, do we want to do that, do we not want to do that? Do we need more time to consider the uses?
I mean, it'd be great to have Kristin here, because then, you know, we can go back and forth. But I, again, I know this is later in the process, so go and ask, you know, where she's really thinking in all of this.
So, I mean, we could-
But we also have art houses, galleries, theaters, less than 50 people, but I mean, where does the board stand on that? Is that all we want, we need more time, or we don't want?
What is Josh's thoughts on?
I mean, look, if you feel like you want to-
There's a lot of stuff coming up that will fall under this, you know, and, you know, so I think we probably should put it in, and we're just going to assist businesses to move forward or new businesses to come in. That's my thought on it.
I mean, look, we could always-
It was definitely continue to talk about-
We could have, we could have Kristin come in to talk about the use stuff, but the other stuff, though, I mean, we're going to be, we're going to have to make decisions, though. If Kristin's here, we are going to have to make some decisions.
Not everyone says this all has to be in one local law.
Yeah, I mean, we can have multiple. We can decide that we want to do this, you know, and we want to, we're just trying to get started with something. So, if you want, then, I mean, for-
Do we want to put a pin in that one and talk about it with Kristin?
Yes, yes.
Sure. All right, so then we'll do another 6:00 PM, hopefully she's available.
And the same question about the next one, which was large art houses. In, out, more time?
I want to get a better definition of that.
Yeah.
And it sounded like, I mean, I'm reading the tea leaves here, but it sounded like everybody wanted funky discos and cabarets and dance, live entertainment, and liquor licenses out? Or you guys want to keep it in, or?
I mean, I think that, you know, that causes a lot of problems, I think.
We can close the barn door now.
And beauty parlor, it sounded like nobody had a problem with that, since it's a-
We have way too many of them.
No, no, you're still going to have the same duplicative term, beauty parlor, beauty shop. Offices, it sounded like nobody was interested in it.
Yeah, no, nobody's interested in that. Restaurants, we're going to change the definition to eating and drinking.
Well, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, everyone's okay with that.
Do you need more time on essential services, or are you okay taking that out?
What is that exactly?
Yeah, I still don't get it. I know essential services are, it's a utility.
It's a, it's utilities, it's, yeah.
Is that, is it anything to do with, like, physical therapy, like, either was a physical therapy?
No, that's not essential. Essential services like a transfer station.
Transfer station, which we have right now.
We don't necessarily want another-
Emergency broadcast.
I get you, but it's there.
So I'm sorry, was that out, in, or you want to leave it in?
Well, that means that, you know, that if Verizon ever leaves, or if there's another property available, another utility could come in and could take up space. So you got to think really, I don't think we want that on Main Street. Do you want another Verizon type?
I know, but where would it be? Like, where would it be? Like, once it's, because we need essential-
What are your thoughts about?
Well, as long as it's there, I mean, they don't have to pack up and leave. I mean, they're there as long as they're there.
No, we're not saying that, I'm not saying that.
Well, connection set.
Yeah.
I just want to, would like to hear what Steve said.
The deal is, as I understand it, that overall, you're trying to make this area more upscale. And you're going to have restaurants and bars, and obviously still offices, but I mean, you know. And essential services really are not consistent with that. So unless you have some special reason that you want to keep essential services in, and maybe out, I don't know. There's no reason how this is a permitted use.
Go, and, you know, they go, none of those businesses work, right?
No, no, we're talking facilities for essential services.
No, 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 we're not talking about like the lines and the utility poles. We're talking about buildings that will transfer.
Dedicated to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think we don't, I don't think we want them to take up buildings on Main Street. I mean, we can't, look, they, we can't tell them anywhere to take down their, their-
No, you can't.
But we can prevent them from locating another transfer station on Main Street.
The other thing we can do on this is kind of take a half measure. I could draft it up to take it out, and I'll prepare a memo along with Kristin explaining exactly what this would involve. We'll touch base with Gary Vincent to see if there's any, and probably the assessor for good measure, to see if there's any essential services that would be a countervailing consideration here. Hey, you might want to, and if you don't want to include it in the local law, you just delete it before you introduce it. So, I'll put it in for now, but we'll put an asterisk by it, then I'll have to look into that. And last one, Josh, was what?
Oh, change special use permit approval from town board to planning board. But I think we did that, the only place in there where that was, was the asterisk on number 11. So I don't know that we need to do that, because essentially, for the special use permits, they are all planning board approval, except for number 11, which we just got rid of.
But if I'm reading this, and Steve, if you can clarify, the way I was reading this, it says change special use approval from the town board to planning board. Is that only has to do with this one case, or is this for all zoning? Because that's why I'm not in favor of picking-
My recollection was it was just the GC, but certainly if the board was so inclined, it could apply to anything. A lot of towns don't have their SUPs done by the town board, they leave it to the planning board. A lot do, either it's the town board, some, as Cornwall currently does, have some go to the planning board and some go to the town board. But my recollection is what we talked about was taking it out of the GC, and that's why it's under-
It's just, it's just the GC, and it really only applies to, once we take out number 11, there are no more, currently in the use table, there are no more special use permits that require town board approval. Everything else is planning board, as of right now, if you look at the use table.
Right, but if we have something that's, right, we have something that's in the hopper. There is something that's coming up in the general, in the GC, correct? We do have a possible special use permit, right? Or we just, I'm thinking about the theater.
Yeah, but that's-
Is it going to be something that's going to be-
I think that's subject to planning board approval, not town board approval.
Okay.
They need a zoning change, and that would continue with you, to the extent they would need a special use permit because of the zoning change to GC. I think that special use permit goes to the planning board for a theater, wouldn't it?
Well, yeah, I mean, currently, currently, the only thing we have in here right now that could be construed as being a theater would be library, museums, and art galleries. We actually don't even have theater in our code right now. It's not even a use, it's like, it's not even on the use table. But if you look at every other use by special permit in this code, other than number 11, which we're getting rid of, it's all subject to planning board special use permit approval. So if, if we, let's say we put theater in here, if we were then, yeah, I think it should be the same thing, unless, of course, the board thinks it should be, you know, theater should be special use permit by town board. I mean, it would then be-
And it's less than 50 people.
Yeah. It would then be the only thing in-
But since there's nothing in there now, and you haven't granted a zoning change, there's really no reason to amend the code in regard to it. So that one's probably just a-
So that is the GC district, there. So we kind of, so I will have Kristin come in at the, we'll do another 6 o'clock meeting, and we'll, in April. If that's okay with you.
April?
Yeah, that's like the work session, unless you want to have another special meeting like in March, okay.
Maybe we could do it as part of our work session, right? Or does it have to be?
I mean, I think we have to see what we have in the work session.
Maybe we could limit our agenda so that we can focus on it.
Certainly, I mean, we could certainly do that. I just know how this goes. It's going to probably be like an hour of-
Right, but I'm going to say it will help us focus, I think.
Sure. Okay, so next up, we have revisions to AR zoning. You should also have, if you go in there, you should also have the use tables as well. And we spoke about this last time, where Steve was supposed to go and pull up the deed for the golf course.
Right, and we just got it this afternoon, that information.
I mean, do you want to explain what you basically-
Well, it's pretty straightforward, actually. There's a, there's a deed for 4.1 acres to the golf course. Apparently, back in the day, when we're talking 1940s, some of the golf course property was purchased outright, and it wasn't subject to a regular reverter. But other portions of the golf course, the only one I found is this one. This is the Parks donation.
Correct.
Marie Robinson Parks. And the people who donated land to the former, it was called the former golf club, said, "Look, we'll give you our land free of charge, but if you ever stop using this for a golf course, this reverts to us. It comes back to us as though we had not de-dated away." And the language that they use in it, in terms of, it's called a reverter clause, is "together with the appurtenances," this is what's being granted, "and all estate and rights of the property of the first part in and to set premises for so long as lands described above are used by the party of the second part for golf club purposes and for no other purposes. And this conveyance is made upon the express conditional limitation that in the case said lands shall ever cease to be used by the party of the second part for golf club purposes. Then and in that case, the estate granted to the party of the second part shall thereupon become void, and the title to said lands shall revert back to the party of the first part." Sue, the question is, what are his golf club purposes? There's a couple of proposals here in regard to the AR district, which would affect the former golf course, Scrum King Golf Course, it's called now. Restrooms, locker rooms, clubhouse, country clubs, permitted by special permit, that's pretty clearly golf club purposes, to me. I think somebody would be hard pressed to say this is just not a golf club purpose. Hotels, well, you know, there's a lot of golf courses out there that do have hotels as part of their physical plan. With the Pebble Beach or someplace like that, you'd see that there were hotels that you could stay at when you're playing golf. However, if you don't link the golf course and the hotel closely enough- However, if you don't link the golf course and the hotel closely enough, it looks a heck of a lot like you have a standalone hotel that happens to be near a golf course, and I'm not sure that's golf course purposes. But, more to the point with this, the people who can enforce this reverter are the heirs of Ms. Parks. And they may or may not be interested in saying, "Hey, a hotel is not a golf club purpose, therefore it should, the property should come back to us." Um, this is a risk that the property owner will be taking, not the town as such. Um, the proposal isn't to have standalone hotels, it's to have hotels as accessories to the golf course. So, I don't know that concern over enforceability of rights of reverter is something you really wanna let enter into your zoning. If a property owner comes forward and says, "I have a golf course, I wanna put a hotel on it," and maybe you think a hotel's a good idea, maybe you don't, that's a separate issue. But, um, "I, I wanna put a hotel on it, the hotel's gonna be accessory to the golf course, it's gonna be, you know, for golf course patrons, or people who are staying over to use the golf course, or only for people who buy, you know, eighteen holes at the golf course, it's required as part of the package." You know, that's on them as to whether or not that meets the reverter rights. Um, again, if you don't think a hotel's a good idea, you're gonna view this very differently, but if your concern is, gee, I'm afraid to allow hotels because I'm afraid it may key this reverter, it's not clear at all that, you know, the proposed hotel would key the reverter, and, and even if it was, I, I, I don't think it's something you get into when you're drafting your zoning, you know? So, that's where we are on the reverter, um, golf course, golf club purposes. Um, the same thing with the, uh, use of the clubhouse for, um, used by people who aren't golf club members, um, and, and possibly even hosting, um, uh, events. Clearly, the golf club, uh, the, the clubhouse itself is a golf club purpose, and allowing members to come there is a golf club purpose. Allowing people who aren't playing golf, who aren't members, to come in and have a drink, or maybe eat at the restaurant. You know, you're getting a little bit away from golf club purposes at this point, but I, I think anybody objecting would be hard pressed to say that the golf club, it's, the golf, um, clubhouse itself doesn't serve a golf club purpose, because it's primarily there for, you know, people who are playing on the course to come in afterward. Uh, when you start getting into hosting events that aren't related to golf, now again, you're getting a little bit away from golf club purposes, and, you know, I don't know how a judge would rule on that kinda thing, but again, it's not like it's illegal for the town to allow it.
All the risk is on the.
It's all the risks on the property owner, and, um, you know, again, whether you think it's a good idea or not, it's a separate issue, but in terms of your concern over the reverter, that's what I can tell you.
Yeah, I mean, I think historically, if you look at it, um, that clubhouse, for at least as long as I can remember, non-golf club members, uh, including the Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, uh, many people have held events there for years.
Unions?
For you, I, I, I mean, everything. So really, it's, it's the, it, it's been functioning that way for decades, but there's no definition for clubhouse in the, the, um, on the definition table, and that, that's a problem for anyone that might want to do anything with that property, because no one's gonna take a risk if they take it, and then all of a sudden they have to get a definition, or you know, a ruling from the building inspector, "Well, look, it's not here," and then you're leaving it purely open to whoever's the building inspector as to whether or not they decide that you can have your restaurant open to the public. You know, or you can do this, or you, it's better to have things in the definition, um, and so.
But are we doing this on speculation? There's someone that's going to be coming to do this?
I, I think that right now we have a, right now we have a stalled project, and that's not going anywhere, and I think that the town, if it has an interest in getting this back on the tax rolls down the road, and, and having this monstrosity put back in some type of shape, we need to do things that when you have people looking at the property, they have some certainty that they can do things. Because otherwise, no one's gonna touch it, and then have to come back to the town board and hope that we're gonna do it, or hope that the building inspector is gonna let them open a restaurant that allows them to serve the public. I, I, I just think, you know.
So, alright, so we're doing this to make this property more marketable or desirable? Is that what you're saying?
I would say we're, uh.
More usable.
Usable.
More usable for whoever chooses. I mean, right now, uh, look, right now, it's owned by a golf foundation, it's off the tax rolls, and it's doing nothing, but it stalled. Um, we have no idea if they are ever going to pick up again. As of right now, it's dead in the water, um.
Have you spoken with them?
Uh, yeah, and basically, they are, they said, um, "We may get back to it, we may not get back to it." We don't know, we can't tell you right now, we don't know. They don't have the money to finish it, though. So, basically, they're just, the only thing they're doing right now is essentially making sure that we don't have stormwater runoff, and that we're not fining them every time it, you know, rains. That's, that's, that's their main concern right now, because, you know, we've got a sizable amount of money and an account to cover, you know, that sort of situation. So I, it's just, you, uh, right now, it's permanently in limbo until they've told us otherwise. So, my goal is to get the golf course back on the tax rolls and back to something that the community can use, and it can generate sales tax revenue and property. That's my ultimate goal.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So, what are we doing with it?
I'm, I mean, I think we should do this, you know, um, I'd like to have Steve put this in and start working on this. I mean, certainly, we can have, um, if we have Kristen in, in April, even if, you know, we can have, we could still have Steve maybe proceed with this in the local law, or we could certainly have Kristen sort of.
You could do both, you could always pull it out. Um, you know, if you listen to what she has to say, you don't like it.
But for now, we're going forward with this.
I mean, I think we, unless, unless you wanna wait until April, and we'll have Kristen talk about this too, but I mean, this is basically, you know.
Are there any disadvantage of waiting until April? I mean, is this, can be solved with Steve here only?
I mean, the, I guess, uh, you know, I guess the question would be, what are the, the concerns? Because this is the right language that would do this. So it's either we wanna do this and allow the golf course, whoever owns it, to be able to proceed, or we don't. I mean, that's really what it comes down to.
Yeah, we give her an idea of where, what we're thinking.
Yeah.
Right.
So again, am I writing it up with it, or not, or?
I'll say yes.
I'll say yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should do it.
I'll do, I wanna talk to about the, uh, in reference to the hotel.
The hotel thing kinda, it was a story property.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I wanna make sure the hotel is not inflected on that, wasn't, uh, deed right now.
Well, the issue with hotels, of course, and, and I don't think that it's what's considered at all, is you don't wanna have a seven-story Sheraton there.
Oh, no, no, no.
So you're gonna have to be very careful on how you drafted, and, yeah, but cycling is still gonna need bulk requirements. If you're gonna say we're gonna allow hotels,
Yeah, we, we.
What are the height requirements, with the parking requir- you, you can't just say, "We're gonna need to fill that in."
Well, that's what I wanna talk about more, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, of course. I mean, I, I think if we're gonna do this, we then have to go and, and, and put in the bulk requirements, otherwise, we're gonna have issues where.
But you don't wanna hear anybody in the neighborhood, obviously, I mean.
No, of co- of course, of course. So I think, I think that's, that's sort of, um, um, so let's, let's have, we can talk about maybe, you know, proper bulk requirements to go along with this, because we wanna make sure. You know, look, we don't want a five-story, six-story, seven-story, but maybe a two-story, twenty-room. So, um, bed and breakfast ins are already allowed in the district, but that's capped at fourteen rooms. So, but, that may not be enough, right? So maybe there's a certain, you know, amount that you wanna go, you know, above that, you know, limit that based on bulk requirements. And we have the ability to do that. We can also make this, you know, subject to planning board special use permit. Um, there's a lot of things we could do. So, alright, let, let's, uh, put that on for further discussion.
Okay.
So, next up, we had, you should have a copy of this. Um, there is this, this is the, this right here, which is the, um, deals with parking. This is the language that, yeah, we, I, I.
You skipped. Where?
The off-street parking requirements. Yes, I skipped that, because last time we said we weren't gonna go that way. If you go back to your memo.
Yeah, I know. No, we were on this, and then. Sure.
Yeah, I mean, we're just following, break down the, the memo. If you go back to the memo. So go to page two.
Okay, this is where I had the confusion last week, because I took Steve's memo, and that's not.
Yeah, so if we go to page two, which we just spoke about, um, some of the definitions for the A, the A R R zone, we're now to off-street parking requirements. Last week, we said that we weren't gonna go with, with either of these two bullets here, but Kristen drafted this, this new red line version, which would basically allow the planning board to waive up to a hundred percent of a parking requirement, where the applicant demonstrates, based on written narrative analysis or documented shared parking agreement, that the parking demand requested to be waived can be accommodated off-site. So, this was, instead of, um, entirely eliminating the minimum parking, we were, we're allowing the planning board to waive, right now, they can waive, what is it, twenty-five or thirty percent they can waive?
Yeah, I, I forget which percentage it is, but it's, it's, it's not substantial now.
So this would allow them to, based on, and for instance, we actually allowed Farrar to do this, um, with the darkroom.
But, but, but he came, he came with the solution.
He came up with.
But that's what this says here. If you, so this says that the applicant would have to document a shared parking agreement through their narrative, their analysis. This would allow the planning board to do that, but they would, so this would be, this would basically allow the planning board to waive up to a greater amount than they currently can. Apparently, they can waive up to twenty-five percent. I'm saying make that go further, or allow them to go further, but put in certain, you know, uh, requirements that they would, that the applicant would have to meet if they're gonna go further.
Yeah, I just wanted to be consistent, because we've had now two, two properties that have gone through this. You know, as far as the, the farmhouse market and, and the parking, and, and the, um, the disco, the darkroom parking. I want it to be, like, the po- it has to be consistent. I mean, I can't change it now to favor, like, a new, a new one.
No, I don't, I don't think we're doing that. I, I, I actually, I think that, and if I, so and actually, those two, those two examples say to me that parking is a barrier to business expansion on Main Street, because we're never gonna have enough park, parking. There's actually plenty of parking, like, no one ever has a, you know, a problem sort of getting there. There's plenty of parking, and, and so we're gonna get into the parking study next, and you're gonna see that there is plenty of spots in and around the Main Street area. Plenty, absolutely plenty. Um, and so this is why I'm saying that we should allow the planning board to waive up to a hundred percent. If, if the applicant, if the applicant can, well, we let the darkroom do it, um.
Well, no, he, he actually has parking. He, he made an agreement. He has parking. He actually, here.
And it said, it said, it says right here, though. It says if they have a shared par- so what I'm saying is, we, we can define this however we want, so that if the applicant meets certain standards to the planning board, they have a parking agreement, they have a this, they have a that, that the planning board can waive up to that amount. I'm not saying we just let them do it, I'm saying that you.
Yeah, because I would think that they ha- we have to account for that.
But did you, but did you read this? It actually says, "Or documented shared parking agreement."
I did read it.
So what I'm saying is, let's, and we can.
The way you're saying it, it's, it's like you wanna leave.
I, look, I think, look philosophically, um.
You said a hundred percent. A hundred percent means all. That's why I'm saying, like, that's why I'm not.
Josh, can you please just finish explaining?
I would like the planning board to be able to waive up to a hundred percent of parking requirements for retail and restaurants on Main Street. If the applicant can demonstrate that they're able to do it through, if you read this right here, Kristen drafted this, if you read the actual definition, it says, "If the applicant demonstrates a written narrative and analysis or documented shared parking agreement, that the parking demand requested to be waived can be accommodated off-site."
Yeah, just on, just on code, proper code.
Yeah.
So those two planning boards, yeah.
This is all I'm asking for. If you, if you read this, it's actually, makes sense.
They're still supplying parking spaces, but just not on Main Street.
What's that?
They're still supplying parking spaces, just not.
Yes, but, but, but that's what I'm saying. It says right here, if they can produce a, if you read this, it says that if you can demonstrate through written narrative and analysis and/or documented shared parking agreement.
Just, just so we're clear, I'm sorry, Josh.
I'm not clear.
Alright, listen. What we're talking about is off-street parking.
Right.
Okay, so you have to have a lot with spaces, or you have to have somebody else's lot with spaces. Right now, the planning board, if it finds that the number of parking spaces required by the code is probably more than the use that you have, you're proposing really needs, can waive a certain number of them, or if you have, or if you have a, a shared parking agreement with somebody else, so that you don't have the space on your own lot, you have them someplace else, they can also say, "We're, we're not gonna require, you know, that you have that many on your lot, because you have them someplace else." This is talking about exactly that. The one difference is, and it's not a big difference, but it's something you're gonna wanna look into. It talks about shared parking agreement. Does that mean that both lots that are using this parking lot have a simultaneous right to park their cars there? Does it mean that one can do it only during the day, and the other can do it during the night? It's something that you might wanna refine. But if you can get that balance down, you're gonna wind up with the same amount of, what, what you're waiving is on-street parking if there is on-street parking on a different lot. You follow? Now, you know, you have my, my restaurant here, and oh my gosh, it goes right up to the borders of, of my lot. There's no place I can put off-street parking. But guess what? Two lots down, there's a fella who has thirty parking spaces, and I only need twelve for my restaurant, so I rent to an agreement with him, that I can use those parking spaces for my, my lot. And then you, you have the planning board, say you're gonna put up a sign, parking, you know, at three oh one Main Street, instead of two ninety-nine Main Street, and that's, that's how this would work. As currently constituted, the planning board can't, can't do that.
I see. So this is, this proposes the planning board will be able to do it.
Yes.
Yeah, if, if, if the applicant can meet these certain standards, and look, we can define whatever the standards are. We don't have to go with what Kristen wrote, but I'm just saying, come up with a way for an applicant to meet their parking, you know, uh, their minimum parking needs, um, through the planning board without having to go through the Z B A. That's all, so.
Back onto the zoning board?
Well, let, so for instance, I'll, I'll, I'll give you an example. Um, so, you wanna build a restaurant, and you need twenty spots, and you can only produce four or five spots. You would need to go to the Z B A to get a variance. Um, this would allow the planning board, if the applicant can work out this, this off-street situation, to waive the rest of those spots that it would have to go to the Z B A to get a variance for. That, so this basically, this allows the applicant to stay in the planning board instead of having to waste months and months and months and months,
For a decision.
And ten thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, to basically, when the planning board is perfectly capable of handling this.
Well, it's also a different standard of review. You have to prove a lot more to get a variance from zoning board than to get a waiver from the plant, depending on what the criteria for the waiver is. But I mean, under this standard, it would be much easier to get a waiver from the planning board. All you have to do is show, "I can provide the parking elsewhere. Don't make me put the parking on, on my lot."
I, I just think that needs to be tweaked, so.
Sure.
In the case that.
Well, do you wanna have Kristen come in and talk about it, or?
Oh, no, this, this is gonna go on the list for us to talk about with Kristen.
It's more, it's more defined.
Yeah.
Overall, I think it's a good idea, because then it allows other businesses to use unused, uh, space that has been vacant.
Spaces that aren't used during, during the night, that are used during the day, and what. Um, okay, so, so next up, um, we've got the, I, uh, the religious use thing here. I don't know if you wanna briefly.
Well, di- did we decide no accessory apartments, or do we decide yes accessory apartments?
I thought we had that further down here. Um, that's prob- I would imagine that's more discussion. I mean, I think we had all kind of, I mean, my position is that we should make it easier to do accessory dwelling units, or at least allow detached, where people can have them over garages. Um, they already have them over garages, they're just not legal. I mean, people have these all over town. Um, currently in the code, your, your A D U has to be attached to your house. Um, what I'm saying is, to make it easier, let's allow some above garage, um, accessory dwelling units. Um, let's, you know, maybe let's make it easier. Um, there's some stuff we can do around, um, the sizes of A D Us, like what's the appropriate size? There's stuff to do with parking. Um, you, you know, one, one thought is to have the planning board, I mean, look, there are certain neighborhoods where there is no ability to have a A D U, uh, a unit, and have the cars parked on the street, they need to be in the driveway. But then there's other areas where there's plenty of, you know, parking. So, so essentially, you would allow the planning board to determine whether or not, um, you know, whether or not they're gonna waive the off-street parking requirement for an A D U. Currently, you have to have a, um, an off-street spot for an A D U, but I'm saying, let's make that, you know, subject to planning board review. And maybe there's some, there's some circumstances where, because that is kind of a, not everyone that's gonna be able to build the A D U can have that unit's cars off the street, and then that prevents people from building the EDU. So, but, you know, put that, you know, subject to planning board review, and I, and I got it, I guess the, I think the building inspector too, so.
Well, there were three issues Josh, you hit two of them, the detached and the parking, the third one was the size of the accessory apartments. Right now, there's a limitation that makes it pretty much, you know, one-person apartment. Do you get interested in making it larger, do you wanna leave it as it is? Might talk about it some more.
I don't think we wanna make it any larger, because then you're, then you're adding hate to say families, and then I'm thinking the school district and, and things like that, so I, I, if it's really an accessory to help like, you know, a parent that's come to move in or.
Well, it's mother, daughter, it's, you know, kid, kid moved home after college, and he's living with his girlfriend, and they're saving for a house, like that kind of scenario. Or maybe it's a single first responder that can't afford to live in Cornwall, and they wanna live in a, whatever, uh, you know, above-the-garage kind of apartment. That's, that's who I think we're targeting, not, we're not looking to bring in like four or five member families.
That's why I think seventy is, is actually.
So, so whatever is the appropriate, I think, and I think Kristen can, there's probably certain definitions for required square footage for certain numbers of households, I would think, that Kristen would.
So, leave that alone, or we're gonna talk about it some more?
I'd say, I'd say.
We can, I mean, look, so it sounds like we need to get Kristen to define some of this stuff.
Just a once-over.
Yeah, yeah, we need to have her define some more.
And, and clubhouse, we're going with the proposed definition, for, at least for the time being, or? Okay.
I just think it'd be really helpful to have her here.
Okay, regard to religious uses, it really couldn't be any easier, um, there are provisions right now, making special permit uses in, um, residential districts. The proposal is to make them specialty use permits in every district. Uh, we might tweak the bulk requirements somewhat for commercial districts, just because maybe you want more of a setback, if it's a industrial use, you have a house of worship or other religious use. But that aside, we're basically gonna take what's in the accessory, in the residential districts now, and just make it applicable in all districts, or the commercial districts as well, that is. Um, we've discussed the reasons behind that, and I don't see need to go over it again unless you want me to, so just let me know if you're interested in doing it, if you are, we'll write it up, if not, or if you just wanna talk about it some more, we can.
I feel I'm moving to discuss that more.
Okay.
We then have lighting, um, this to me is a no-brainer, there doesn't currently exist anything in the code that allows us to, to do anything, um, to, you know, for instance, to deal with the lights at, on Cornwall Plaza that are shining down, I mean, right now, we have no ability to enforce anything on that, um, so it's, you know, so we can do this potentially right away, while we maybe look at a more comprehensive, we do have the villages lighting law, we can decide if we wanna do that or not. Um, but we do, they did a lot of work on that, spent a lot of money, so we have the benefit of having all their work, and, and obviously, it's probably, you know, different for the towns slightly, but we could do this first, and then we could then decide to look at the lighting law later, that the village imposed. And so, I, I would say we just go ahead and do this one.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
This is basically right, I believe John Hand took this right out of the, um, out of Woodbury's, uh, uh, code book.
Yep.
Um, we've got the lot line adjustment here, I think we sort of, we spent a little bit of time on this.
Yeah, it sounded like you guys were in favor of this, I mean, unless you wanna discuss it more, I mean. No, maybe?
Well, was there a number, I think that's what I asked last week, and I, and I don't know if I got a clear answer, it's like, for how much, how much the square footage of how, how you're going to adjust the lot, was there a number?
There, there is not a number.
Should we have one? Because if it's something very simple, I get it, we don't need to go back to the planning board, I agree with that.
This just says if you don't increase the total number of building the lots.
Okay, so you could make one.
So, if you had two five-acre lots, and you wanted to make one into a three-acre lot, and the other into a seven-acre lot, you could do it, you could make up fifteen acres, twenty, whatever it is you want, but the square footage is irrelevant, as long as you don't wind up in another building lot.
Okay. Wasn't there something, wasn't there something we did with like fence, fencing, and it was just a matter of like, it was just between two homeowners, and we changed the lot, the lot line, and they didn't have to go before the planning board?
That town of Cornwall has never, has never had that.
No?
If you change a lot line in town of Cornwall, it's treated the same as a subdivision.
Okay.
You have to go through, it doesn't matter if it's one foot or a thousand feet.
That's, I, that's where my question was coming from.
Um, if, if we're not creating a new lot, that would be covered anyway though.
Okay, but they wouldn't have to go through, through the planning board, right?
No, they have to go, oh, you wanna have them not even go through the planning board?
I thought it was, were we discussing like a small lot change, a line change, not to have them go through the expense? That was in my notes.
Oh, well, I mean, maybe, you know, maybe an example would be a, um, if your neighbor has a shed that's what, a foot over on the other, and, you know, is there, is there a way just to, and I could think of examples, even last year where that happened, uh.
You'd have to submit to the building department, and the building department would have to review it and say, alright, you wanna move lot line over five feet so that the shed is completely on that property.
That's all.
Um, we could add something like that, if that's what you wanted.
I mean, that, that comes up all the time, I mean, that's a, that's a.
Do you want, you wanna?
Yeah, I think we should add that, yeah, sorry Steve, we'll be clear.
It's a minor one, right?
As long as you're not creating another lot.
Exactly, I'm another build of a lot.
Well, wait a minute, now, okay. You, you wanna set around with it some? Alright, wait, now, right now, you have a proposal that if you don't create another lot, you get treated differently than subdivision approval, but you still gotta go through the planning board.
Sure.
What you're talking about now is a provision, you don't even have to go to the planning board, you submit a plat to, cause you gotta file with the county clerk anyway, to the, to the building department. What's the criteria for the building, is it five feet, is it ten feet, is it, what is it?
I think that's why I was asking, I thought we were, we had discussed something like that, that's why I was asking.
Alright, I'll, I'll tell you what.
Will you put it on the side?
Let me, let me, let's just put this all on, and I'll talk to Gary, and I'll look at some other codes, and I'll come back with some closed language. And put from the building department, and see what they say.
It would be nice to have the building inspectors in here.
Okay, so, next we have the private zoning changes, and so, um, my understanding is that the, um, I think we already took off Ivy Rock Farm, um, they are currently not even, they haven't submitted anything, um, but they may in the future. Um, the Meadowbrook land, um, Spagnoli, he's got a, he's got a lot that he's, you know, currently has a use that's, I believe is not allowed, and he's, you know, but that's, that's all, he's not submitted anything. Um, we've got Cornwall Apartments, I think we kind of decided that that's on, uh, you know, pause, it's over here for now, um. Um, we can talk further about how to, to deal with, with that, um, you know, whether or not the board is going to, um, you know, send them a letter declining, we're going to, you know, but.
I, I, I think we should send them a letter.
Of no interest, in Cornwall Apartments, I, I have zero interest in the Cornwall Apartments.
So, then we'll have to, um, do we, what do we, did, did we send escrow for that, so what do we need to do then?
Or journey escrow, just say there's no interest at this time, and, um, you know, we'll be remitting your escrow, you know, as soon as Pam can get around to it.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
So, we'll have to, um, do we have to draft a resolution for that?
No, if the board's not interested, you don't have to entertain it.
Yeah, I mean, in fact, we can just have you prepare a letter, and we'll send back the.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you really wanna say no with a capital.
No, 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 no.
The resolution, saying we're not gonna do it.
No, no, I think, I think, I think just, I think just a letter, or a, a, a letter to the property owner saying that we're declining to continue the review on this, and we'll refund your escrow. Okay. Um, we have the Route thirty-two Tondo property, which I believe we need to probably do some further looking into that, but it's, it, it's, it's a, it's a cross from Quality, it's next to, I believe, a commercial lot already.
It's smaller houses, though, it's right up against.
Well, do you wanna ask him, come in and make a, a presentation to you, or?
I believe he did, actually, but we'll, we'll do it, yeah, well, you weren't, you weren't on the board at the time, yeah.
It was big, it was very good what there is, I didn't.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know, uh, in fact, we should probably have, uh, Gary there for that too, because Gary and I brought the property into, it wasn't currently, um, there's some issues that had to be cleaned up.
Gary, and you did what, I'm sorry?
So, he had some, um, uh, the, the site wasn't in compliance with a few things, so we had to, uh, the building inspector had to do some enforcement, and he had to clean it up.
Yeah, 'cause I noticed there was a driver that just, it was paged right after they came and presented.
So, um, we should probably have him back in, and ask him to, to present what he wants to do again.
With more detail?
With, with, yeah, with more detail, we should also, you know, probably get a copy of the, I guess, the zoning map to see what it currently is, and then see what, so. So, we'll have him come back in, um. We then have the extend the GC district to cover the Vet Rep property.
What about nine W?
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
You're running nine W, no gas station part.
Yeah, so I mean, look, I know we, I don't personally have an issue with doing that, but I mean, really, the question is, it's currently zoned residential. Do we really think that someone's gonna build two houses on the property right on nine W like that? I mean, otherwise, it's kind of a, a undevelopable parcel. So, I do think we need, yeah.
I did hear that one plan that did what, what somebody wants to do with it, and I kinda actually like it.
Guess.
I know there's a couple of issues with that, there's a wetlands in the back, and there might be, so there might be a DEC issue, and also the off-ramp coming off of nine W, they have to have a slowdown ramp, so DOT might have an issue with that, just enough room for an actual, you know, off-ramp coming into the gas station, but otherwise, they can resolve those issues.
And just, just so we're, we're clear, but, but, what, at this stage, they're looking for is, is the town board willing to introduce a local law and consider adopting, nobody's asking the town board to approve this at this time. If the board is willing to go that far, introduce a local law, and, and, you know, consider adopting, it isn't something I, I just have no interest in, and I'm not, not gonna, not gonna do that. Then they go to the planning board, they submit their plans, the planning board undertakes secret review, it'd be a coordinated review, and at some point, the board will introduce the local law to, to change the zoning and adopt it. That can't be done until secret review is closed, which the planning board will be closing. But it doesn't make sense for them to go to the planning board now, if the town board has no interest in doing this. So, what these people are looking for is either the board to say, yes, we're willing to introduce the local law, we're willing to consider adopting this, or no, you're wasting your time, don't, don't go any further. So, that's what nine W needs to know, will the board move forward with the local law on it? Or is this just not something the board's interested in? And then if you tell them that, they go to the planning board, you'll get more information from the planning board about what the site's actually gonna look like as it's developed, and ingress and egress and all that.
Right.
And, and that may, that may lead you to deny the, the zoning change, at the end of the day, it happens sometimes. They can look at the thing, and you decide, we were interested in it, we're willing to entertain it, but we're not willing to do this. But, um, that's, that's what they want now, thumbs up, thumbs down, where are you on that?
Yeah, um, I mean, I, I, I would say, I mean, like Tim said, I think, um, the proposed idea for the gas station, EV charging farm stand, kind of welcome to, yeah, something like that, to me, I mean, I, I don't know what else would go there, I mean.
Oh, it's a tough, it's a tough piece of property.
Not gonna put two houses there, not gonna put a, you know, not gonna put a drive-through, fast food place there. Yeah. Yeah, so to me, I mean, I think, you know, if the board's willing, we let them know that, and, and this way they can start to. Um, and then we get to the, to Vet Rep, um.
I'm sorry, God, just, what, that, that's a, oh.
Yeah, yup, it's a, it's a thumbs up, um. Sorry, Steve, I know we're not being clear here, um, then we get to Vet Rep, and we know what we have to do with that, we kinda spoke about this a little bit last week, where they're now very much, in fact, tomorrow, they're submitting their planning board application, and we actually had that question about the escrow that I sent around to you earlier today. Um, they're submitting that tomorrow, um, and both of these issues would track, so, a, a planning board application, um, we would also advance a local law, but we couldn't pass it till secret review was done, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, it would sort of track the same way, but they need to know that we're willing to do that before they essentially go to the planning board tomorrow, and submit everything, and put eleven thousand dollars down, um, minus the.
Five thousand dollars.
Well, yeah, so last year, they put down five thousand dollars for review of the zoning, they would like to, since both things are gonna track the same, and it's gonna be the same consultants reviewing everything, essentially, they would like to take the five thousand they already have down for just the zoning review.
And maintain a single account.
And maintain a single account with the planning board, since that's where the bulk of the review's gonna happen anyway. So, um, yeah, so tomorrow, they're prepared to submit everything, cause tomorrow, I think, twelve noon deadline, um, to Diane to get on the calendar for the planning board next month, that's twelve noon tomorrow. So, they're prepared to do that and to start moving forward, um, they just sort of wanna know if we're, you know, willing to start advancing a local law to, to extend the GC district to cover that property.
I would say yes.
I'll say yes.
Yeah, I would say yes, too.
It's Vet Rep, definitely.
It also makes sense, because we're doing a good thing for our community, yeah.
So, and then, but that also gets into, when we get back to talking with Kristen about the need to put theater as an allowed use
Exactly.
in the GC district, because it's not currently in the GC district.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, so we have a couple.
See, that wouldn't be a deal.
Yeah.
I mean, of size, force, and all that, that's more the planning board.
Yeah, 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 of course, yeah, yeah, um. Okay, so I think, um, we're done with this now, and we'll, we'll have Kristen, um, come back to the next meeting that we have in April. Steve and I'll do, do some work offline and get this, uh.
We'll prepare a draft.
Yeah, well, we'll prepare a draft, um, okay. Okay, so, we're now gonna move into the regular part of the meeting, um. So, first up, we have the approval of minutes from February seventh, twenty twenty-three work session and special meeting, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting, and the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ozzy?
Yes.
Mr. Woben Osby?
Yes.
Okay, next up, um, is there any public comment on any of the agenda items tonight? Yes?
Hi, just like, I just got a few, one thing that, um, I'm, I'm seeing from last week and this week is, um, and I get, I might, I get the answer to it, but six o'clock starting, there's a lot of people that work, a lot of people that go to school, a lot of people that have kids they have to feed, so I personally am very concerned about residents who can't make it at six o'clock and are not able to watch it on, on the video. So, that's one of my issues. Um, the other issue that I, I had was actually a question, there's a resolution, and I'm sorry I wasn't here last week, I was ill, but, um, on the resolution for Cornwall EMS door replacement, I'm kinda puzzled by that, because it's actually New Windsor who we have a contract with. Um, is it because Cornwall still owns the building?
Yes, correct.
The town owns the building.
The town owns the building.
And that will go out, like, for three bids to get the door replaced, or how does that, how's that gonna work?
We've.
We only have two, I think we had two bids.
Yeah, we've actually reached out to a number, only two have bid on it, and we, and we only, um, only one has come back with an ADA compliant bid, and it has to be ADA compliant, so.
Alright, thank you for that, so again, my, my major concern, and I, with many other things, is that time, thank you.
Aubrey, I just ask a question, would you kindly tell us what is the time that you think it's ideal for the residents?
I think seven o'clock, I mean, that gives parents time to, if they're working, come home, feed the kids, maybe feed themselves, and get here. Uh, people who are going to school, college, you know, they have set courses, you know, they, you don't want to adversely affect them leaving class, if you will, um, depending on what it is, just to get here an hour earlier than what is everyone knows as the normal time. Um, there are a couple other, um, examples I can give, but I think those, uh, fit well, thank you.
The, the regular meetings are being held at seven PM, and special meetings are at six. Every single resident in Cornwall, school district, and here, village, or anywhere, can email individually, ask us any questions, they can call us, my phone number's everywhere, so it doesn't have to be a six o'clock or seven o'clock, you guys can reach us anytime, so.
Well, uh, you know, I, I feel like, um, no one is as concerned as I am about the rest of our community members, so if that's the case, and the board doesn't really, you know, care about making sure people can be here and hear what's going. and hear what's going on and listen, um, then I, I guess that's something we'll have to put up with, um, or, or, or not. Thank you.
Maybe we could just be more careful with the trend, because we've had two meetings in a row where we're starting at six o'clock. I, I, I don't want it to become a trend where we're now meeting at six o'clock.
We hear you, and we make adjustments.
Yeah, I mean, I thi- I think when we're trying to get through certain lengthy topics, we don't want to be here until ten, eleven, and sometimes we do have things, we're not going to ever have agendas where we have four or five items on them, we're just not. We have a lot of business to do for the town, and so sometimes we have to, to meet early to have these. It's not a, you know, it's not an everyday occurrence, we've had two zoning workshops. We've, we've heard your concerns, um, we will certainly take them into account for future meetings, but we may need to have future meetings that happen before seven. I, I mean, I can't guarantee forever that we're gonna, but we will certainly take that into account.
And just for follow-up.
Yes.
Not only my concern, but I've heard from several of my, my neighbors and friends, they feel like, uh, the time was moved up, and a lot of people didn't know it, um, we, we told a lot of people that it was moved up. I think they feel, or what they've told me is, they feel like things are trying to get done under the rug and pass through without people's, um, listening or input, thank you.
Please, Sean, don't.
Yeah, no, I mean, I. I, I wouldn't, I mean, that, that sounds like, that's.
I will, I'll tell them.
That's, that's kind of mischaracterizing. Yeah.
I know, but that's how they feel.
I understand.
You know, I mean, again, everything is on, uh, it's recorded, it's live streamed, it's on video, everything that we're considering, we're following every state law, as far as, um, putting the documents out, we're available to, to, to meet and speak with people, so I think that's a, quite frankly, a mischaracterization.
And the, the minute, the agenda wasn't put on the, um, town board website until, um, after I had already printed the first one. So I think there's a concern about how timely things are put up, thank you.
So we have a requirement, the day before, we put out a draft, which is not the final, and then the day of, we put out a final, and oftentimes, things come on and things come off based on what has to be done in order to do the town's business. So we're always, and if you look back historically, that's how it's always been under previous supervisors. There is always, if you look back, there is an agenda that would come out the day before or on a Friday, and then there was one that would come out three, four, or five o'clock the day of the meeting. And I, the whole time I was on the town board, that happened. Yes?
Um, Nancy Bryan, I have some concerns about the parking study. First of all, I'm going to be very honest with you, that I think it's, it's a farce that there are a hundred and sixty parking spots on Main Street. You want to go and continue to include all those parking spots where people don't park, that's fine, but I'm going to tell you, the residents are not going to park down by, um, Tamar Lane and McCann's Lane to go shopping up on Main Street, okay? So that's not going to happen. So you can, you can continue to count those as viable parking spots, that's just, that's pretty much a joke. Um, I think we should be letting the people of, um, of Clinton and Broadway know that they're being counted in on certain areas of their road as viable parking, on one side and both sides of the street, um, moving forward. I find it very sad that going back several supervisors ago, there have been many recommendations made for very viable solutions to parking, municipal parking, and nobody has ever done anything. So now we have a parking study, okay? I find it very interesting that we are compared to Asbury Park, New Jersey, Helen, New York, and Yonkers, New York. I find that very interesting. Painting to park, which was one of the big ideas in this parking study, does nothing for the residents of this town. If you want, if you think that's a cute idea, because we're going to have all these people coming in from out of town, you are forgetting that there are people that live in this town, that go shopping on Main Street, utilize services on Main Street, and you're going to want them to do an app or a parking pass or whatever you're going to have, whatever that plan is. That's the worst idea you ever had. I know that's part of the, the parking study. I also find it very interesting that. I find it very interesting that, um, they have new, new projects, and included in the boutique hotel is a slash brewery, which I find very interesting, because we were talking about brewery tonight as part of, you guys were, as part of the, the zoning thing, and never in the meetings that I attended about the hotel did it mention a slash brewery, okay? The parking spots that they are continuing to put down there have never referenced employees. Maybe those are included in there, but this one references rooms. There has been never, in any presentation that was made about that project, did anybody ever, ever reference employees. So parking demand associated with future developments, farmhouse market, Celito Lindo restaurant, the darkroom, and the boutique hotel brewery. I didn't realize that the farmhouse market and the restaurant were new, were new projects, okay? Unless they're going on through some other, other things. I, I think that there's a lot of concern with this. I think that you folks sitting up there need to remember that you represent everyone. And when you start putting precedence over people that will come into the town and forget that you represent the residents, then you shouldn't be sitting there anymore.
Sure.
Is there anywhere I can just make a comment here?
No, so, so, so I think, I think before we get into the, the parking study here, what I would say is that we put out a R F P, we hired a consultant team, they put together this study. This is their work, we did not influen- the only thing we did is we just, uh, we defined the project area, which, um, they were going to look at parking, and they asked us for future anticipated parking demand. And remember, we started this last year, so last year, a number of those projects that are in there, the hotel, that's a long-range plan, but, but we had an idea that he was going to be doing that. The farmhouse market had not yet gotten their approval, Celito Lindo had not yet gotten their variance, the darkroom had not yet gotten their variance. So when they were doing this study at the time, we sat with the planner and myself and some other members of my team here at Town Hall, and we gave them those future projects. So, yes, obviously, Celito Lindo's now done, the darkroom's done, and farmhouse is done. But at the time that this, that this was going on, those projects were not approved yet, so that's why they're in here. You've got to remember, this, this was put out last, last, you know, um, towards the end of last year, and all the work towards the study was going on spring and summer into the fall. So that's why those are in here like that, as far as those, um, of the future demand. And as far as some of the other issues that were brought up, uh, what I would say is that these are recommendations based on what the report found. This is not Cornwall's plan for the future, these are options that you can use to change parking behavior based on what the findings in the report were. That's, that's all we have here. This doesn't mean that we're going to be doing anything, these, uh, these are recommendations, because the public asked us to do a parking study, and we did. And I hate to say it, but sometimes you do a study, and maybe you don't find out the results that you wanted, you find out other results, and we happen to find out, at least according to the study, we don't really have a parking problem, we have a parking, people use parking differently in different ways on Main Street, and, you know, this report kind of gets into that, and we have different ways we can deal with that. And one of the things that we, you know, we will be talking about, and I know I've said this, is that we are going to have to start enforcing two-hour parking on Main Street, um, because of the bridge project that's happening and the loss of ten spots that's going to be happening from the summer for the next twelve to eighteen months. So the two-hour parking enforcement, that is actually going to free up a lot of spots for residents who currently cannot park in front of hazards, or the dry cleaner, or, you know, Canterbury, or wherever, because people park there all day. So that's one way we're going to help the residents, is to make sure that people don't just park for eight hours or longer in spots in front of businesses. But Frank is here, who's a consultant, and I'm going to let him, um, talk about this. Do you have a, a power, I'm sorry. Do you have a, where would you like Mr. Supervisor to try? Do you all want to? Yes, maybe the audience can see it, so we'll do is, do you have a thumb drill?
Yes.
Maybe you can stick it in here, and then I'll.
Will I have a mouse or some?
Yeah, you can use this, okay.
Good, and then what I can do is.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to. Okay.
The defendants?
Yeah.
I want to sit in a defendant's seat here.
That's not where I want to be, man. I'm not going to upgrade to my windows, Jesus. Sorry. All right, so this is yours right here?
Yes. I just don't want to have my back to the public.
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, you can look to the presentation right if you want.
Do you want to just go, put this through?
Do you want to do the presentation?
Yes, thank you. Great.
All right, good evening, everybody, thank you, Mr. Supervisor, town board members, public. My name is Frank Philichilto, I'm a crate manning engineering, uh, licensed professional engineer. I've been doing this for twenty years. I was born and raised in Warwick, fellow Orange County resident for a number of years. I know parking is a hotly contested matter. Uh, there's almost seldom been a conversation I've had about transportation or parking over my years, where parking isn't a hot-button issue. And the supervisor kind of touched on it, everybody uses parking for different reasons, everyone thinks about it differently. What is a long walk for one person might be a very short walk for somebody else. So I get it, it's very contextual, it's very personal, too, because we all do it. And that's why I personally love transportation, it's a social science as much as it is civil engineering. It also has the element of imperfection, because we're all humans, so, um, I'm, what I'm trying to do here tonight is summarize the facts, our findings, some recommendations. Some can be taken, some can be thrown out if, if the town decides. What we were hired to do is really to discover the facts and present some options that the town can, uh, use or not use. Parking is expensive, I want to say, when you build it from a municipality standpoint. Two reasons why. One, capital, you have to raise a lot of capital, and you have to build, construct parking. It's also rarely the highest and best use for land, because if you don't charge for it, you don't, you're not generating income as a result of it, any direct income. And it takes up space, it's not necessarily environmentally friendly, there's a lot of issues with it. But we all, human, we want to be convenient, we want that spot right in front of the space that we, or right in front of the store that we want to park in, so there's a tug-of-war with it. And the idea is to try to find some balance in the system, not, uh, you know, saddle a municipality with a huge bond to construct a garage it doesn't need if there's parking a five-minute walk down the road that isn't used. So that's how we, we, we sort of approached this, very contextually. We know this is a, 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 a tight-knit community with small businesses, and the idea of paying for parking may not be the most popular idea, we knew that going in, so, um, I don't want to come across as though we didn't, we didn't know about these issues going, we did. We still think there's some validity to presenting them. But just a quick project timeline, there was a two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan update for Main Street and the downtown area that talked about parking and traffic issues. So I believe this was born out of that. In December of twenty twenty-one, the R F P came out, we responded to it, my firm responded to it, uh, at the beginning of January in twenty twenty-two. We were ultimately hired, uh, later that spring into the summer. We commenced the study in, in July of twenty twenty-three, we produced the draft report in November, and.
Twenty twenty-two.
Sorry, twenty twenty-two. And, uh, we, we had a, I, I presented at a town board meeting virtually earlier this winter in February, and now I'm here tonight, uh, to provide an in-person overview. So that's, that's basically where we've been. Uh, study area map is outlined in yellow, to the left of the page is the westerly or southernmost end of the large shopping center. The right, top right, is essentially where we stand today, that intersection of Hudson and Main. Originally, the parking study was supposed to go all the way up Main Street, past the middle school to Academy. And speaking with the supervisor, we decided there's really no sense in doing a parking study on a portion of Main Street that doesn't really have a non-street parking. It's a completely different character, uh, it gets much more suburban and rural there, um, there's, there's not a lot of value. So we, we condensed it, and instead, we looked at, uh, elements along Quaker, west of the, the traffic circle, and paid closer attention to the heart of the, of the town. So one of the things we started with was just sort of a gut check. Think of, beginning of twenty twenty-two, we were coming out of the, while we were still in the pandemic, uh, we were in the heart of it, actually, and we just wanted to get a feel for what traffic levels were like on Main Street, just to kind of calibrate our situation. Obviously, traffic volumes relate to parking to some extent. So these three line charts chart traffic levels on Main Street over a twenty-four-hour period. You can see the, the characteristic, you know, uh, peak in the morning, peak in the evening. And the blue line is the twenty twenty-two traffic data that we collected. So you can see that it's down a little bit in terms of traffic volume. That's not to be, um, unexpected because of, of the pandemic. But it interestingly follows more or less the same trends. We found coming out of the pandemic that, um, the morning period is, is usually the period that is lower than the other periods because of the work-from-home element. People still run their errands at the end of the day, they're still out and about, but the work-from-home element has, has essentially enabled people to work from home, and therefore, they're not on the streets in the morning peak hours, which is what we typically did prior to the pandemic. So that was just a gut check, I'll get to that a little later, it was really just a check to see how Main Street traffic compared in twenty twenty-two with the years prior. There are three other dates there, twenty sixteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one. Interestingly, the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one data are higher than twenty twenty-two. So things were in flux in the pandemic, as we know. But getting to the real meat of the project, the parking utilization methodology, what we, uh, what we wanted to do first was establish an inventory, how many parking spaces, legal parking spaces are out there, so that we could study them. What that means is that you're looking at anything from regulation signs that restrict parking or limit it in terms of time, to factoring people's driveways, obviously, you can't park legally in front of a driveway, to fire hydrants and to stop signs, things that reduce the amount of parking along the street. Anywhere where parking is not marked, uh, we assumed about twenty-two feet per parking space. So if you had a run of, of a hundred feet of clear space, um, you have essentially four really nice-sized parking spaces, not quite five. That's how we did our analysis. And roadway widths were very important, the study area contains a lot of roads that are very narrow. So what we did was we looked, uh, in concert with, um, uh, the police department, we looked at roadways. Anything that was twenty feet or less, or twenty feet or narrower, we said, you know what? This, this street is not assumed to have any legal parking. Whether or not that's actually true in the code is another point, but we just said, we're not going to take credit for any streets that are twenty feet, uh, wide and, and, and narrower. Anything between twenty and thirty, we assumed parking on one side only, and then anything thirty and above, we assume parking on both sides. And that's what yielded, um, the two hundred and forty-eight total spaces within that study area. So just to be clear, going back to the map, two hundred and forty-eight spaces, on-street spaces, within that study area. That doesn't include the town hall lot where we are now, it doesn't include the former municipal lot adjacent to two seventy-seven Main Street. That's now private, wasn't factored in that two hundred and forty-eight number. There were five, uh, streets, uh, or five street segments that we completely eliminated because they just didn't have any legal parking, Bridge Street, Hazen Street, Tory Lane, Union Street, and Willow, were assumed to not have any legal parking. So the two hundred and forty-eight spaces, a hundred and sixty of them are on Main Street. So the 248 spaces, 160 of them are on Main Street. So again, that's the stretch of Main Street from the circle all the way to where we are now. The bulk of the parking in this area is on Main Street. And that, again, excludes those two locations. We did counts in July and in August. So we looked on a typical weekday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., continuous, almost, you know, we were able to count sometimes every half an hour, but we summarized the data every hour just because it takes a long time to get through this study area. And then nine to nine on Saturday. And the basis for those times were really the hours of operation of the local businesses. We looked at the earliest opening business, you know, the cafes, the coffee establishments. And then you look at the far end of the spectrum, the restaurants that are open until nine or 10. And so we wanted to canvas those 12 hours. Interestingly enough, in the same way we looked at traffic bombs, we wanted to see if counting for parking in July and August was gonna be an issue relative to the pandemic. I think we were largely coming out of it last summer. But also the fact that Cornwall sees a lot of tourism in the fall was another factor. And we have, our firm subscribes to this database called NearMap. It basically provides a number of aerial images, similar to like Google, but much more frequent and a much higher quality resolution level. And they essentially allow you to look at an array of still shots. They timestamp it and date stamp it. And so we were able to rewind and look at parking data, like literally look down on the study area from 2016, 2018, and see what parking looked like then. And qualitatively, we were able to kind of say, you know what? This looks generally consistent with the data we collected in 2022. Obviously, there are weekends where you might have a special event in town, or there's a uniqueness where we did not capture that. But for the most part, we believe we have a pretty good existing condition outside of any of those unique events. This graph shows you the total supply in the study area is at the top, so just under 250. And the green represents occupied parking spaces. Blue represents your reserve. So this is on a weekday. This is starting at 7:00 a.m. and then going across to 7:00 p.m. So you can see here the abundance of reserve capacity. And I know it doesn't feel like that always when you're on that stretch between Quaker and Willow, or the traffic circle in Willow. But when you factor the entirety of the study area, you do have a lot of reserved parking. So the peak ended up being on Saturday at 3:00 p.m., 3:00 p.m., which makes sense. 3:00 p.m. on a Saturday, pretty much everybody's out and about. It's sunny, it's nice. That equated to 38% of the total supply was Saturday. What we did then is we took a look, we zoomed into the Main Street area only because we had heard anecdotally when we started this study that we knew that section of Main from the circle to Willow was the problem. It was, it's where the concentration of parking is. It's where everyone is concerned about. And this sort of proves the point. You could see that it's, and this is on the weekday, this is on weekend, and you could see that the max we observed on this day was 70%, leaving 21 spaces available between Main, or between the circle and Willow. So again, the hypothesis going in was proven. It's busiest on Main in that section, no surprise, right? So that's really where we draw our attention going into this. Future parking demand. We now have the existing situation. We know how many people generally park in the area, what's going on. Let's look to the future. What else do we have to consider? So we looked at a five-year horizon. We identified four projects in the study area. Those are the four projects that were mentioned just previously. The darkroom, the farmhouse market, Silvio Delindo, and the boutique hotel slash brewery. Again, this was written at a time when the brewery might have been contemplated. If that has since gone, we can update that in the report. But essentially, what we did was we factored the demand associated with those four projects. Basically, the parking requirement that they would be, that they would need to provide, sum that up, that's 117 spaces. Conservatively, that assumes that they're not gonna build any of their own parking. It's been my understanding, I haven't seen a recent site plan, but it's been my understanding that the hotel would provide a certain amount of parking on site. So if it's happening in the study area, which it is, that 248 spaces isn't impacted as much as it would be if the hotel was building zero parking, which I know was a discussion earlier about, you know, the planning board waiving up to 100% of the parking. But it's been my understanding the hotel is gonna provide some parking, which would essentially pull down that 117. So we found that the reserve parking in the study area was 155 spaces at the worst case period. And so quick math, hey, we can fit the 117. Okay, that's great. That's sort of a brute force, like let's just check the math method. But how do we make sure that that actually works in practice? And that's where we're getting into really the meat of the study and the recommendations is we were asked to look at the viability of a parking system. And what does that mean? Well, it's a host of strategies. It could mean enforcement. It could mean parking restrictions during certain times, or limiting the length or duration of parking. It could mean pricing parking. The goal here, loud and clear, was to encourage turnover on Main Street between the circle and Willow. We've heard just in this meeting that people tend to dwell there, and the enforcement has not been consistent enough. And so you have people essentially parking there all day. And what that does is it makes it hard on people who wanna find parking and ultimately could hurt the businesses because those people can't patronize those stores. So encouraging turnover, you know, in our mind, coming out of this was sort of like the low-hanging fruit. You gotta do it, or else you're never gonna be able to create the type of turnover that you want. The people who do need to park long-term, and there are some of them, can be encouraged in, you know, using various strategies to park in less convenient spaces. So if you work at one of these establishments, maybe we can encourage them to park north of Willow, where we all know there are a variety of striped parking spaces that very few people use. So get those people who wanna park for a long term up there. How do you do that? We'll get to that. Pricing parking appropriately. And this is really where, it's never a comfortable conversation. Nobody wants to pay for something that they've historically not paid for. Paying for parking, it helps to keep the curb open and moving. The industry standard is to price parking appropriately so that 85% of the supply is in use, so that at any one given time, there's 15% unused parking. If your pricing is too high, people are gonna do something else. They're gonna rebel, they're gonna do something, and you have a problem. If you make it too cheap, you know, it's not a barrier to the, you know, the action. So there's been a lot of studies out there. It's very contextual, obviously. What makes sense in Manhattan does not make sense in Cornwall. What makes sense even in Asbury Park, New Jersey, may not make sense in Cornwall. What we were trying to do in the study is show that other municipalities have dumbness with success and that it's not a foreign topic. In addition, improve signage and wayfinding, improve enforcement, make it more consistent and less arbitrary so that people don't feel like they're getting singled out. And the bottom line is be flexible. Try something. If it doesn't work, admit it, move on, try something else. But oftentimes, we come across municipalities that don't try anything and the problem can never move forward. So there's an issue, and there are a host of options to try to solve it. So some findings and recommendations. The key finding here was that there was an adequate parking supply on Main Street in the near term. There's no pressing need to go out and build more parking, you know? For the town to acquire a lot, we looked at the available parking in the area, you know? There's not a lot of vacant lots, first off. To ask the town to do that is now an imposition, not only on the town, taxpayers, who do you think is funding that, right? So that's sort of like, yeah, it might provide us the convenience, but now we gotta pay for it. Instead, you have a resource already in the study area. Try to use that resource. Encourage turnover on Main Street through enforcement and pricing schemes. So improve enforcement of the two-hour parking regulations. It sounded like that was something that was already being talked about. Consider using an app-based system. It provides the greatest flexibility and the lowest cost of entry. So the village of Cornwall, we found out through some discussions, has this already down by, I think it's the park on the river. So that's a very low cost to enter. It provides you with flexibility. You can change the parking. People can utilize it on their phones. It's fairly convenient if you wanna do that. There might be a potential opportunity to use the power or the relationship between the village and the towns to save on that cost because of the opportunity between. Encourage long-term parkers to use spaces north of Willow Avenue. Looks like I had a little typo there. I did not mean to add the word "where." My apologies. But basically, there's nobody parking there. Let's move them up there. And that could be some kind of permit system that the town comes, you know, enacts that allows people who are associated with businesses to park up there. Or you leave those parking spaces completely free and you enact a fair pricing scheme along the busy section and you let the economics play them out. If you know you could park for free, I mean, I looked at it. Tamara Lane to the farmhouse market is .3 miles, it's a five-minute walk. Again, people experience five minutes differently every single time. What I think is a five-minute walk might be very different from somebody else, but it's still within a reasonable distance if you can make a journey. Consider wayfinding signs and transportation alternatives to leverage parking spaces further afield. So you also have a large amount of parking here. Again, it's at the north end of the study area. It's not necessarily the most convenient place. But if you start to see this development starting to happen, and we'll just go back to the study map for a second. I think there was a comment before, and it was a good one, about, you know, why would anybody park here? And you're not wrong. There's nothing there of interest, really. You know, the reason why we park is because we wanna see a building or something. We wanna go into a store, so we wanna be as close as possible to it. If the zoning begins to enable more businesses to utilize areas, that parking now becomes more viable or more convenient. So it's not like you can just do something in 2023 and hope it works for 10 years. Your town is changing, and you kind of have to monitor it. And what might be a good solution in 2023 might need to be pulled back or expanded upon in, you know, in five or 10 years. But the bottom line is that you have the resources. You have the reserved parking already. It's not like you have to go out and build that. You have viable parking on Main that isn't in use. So considering transportation alternatives, if you had parking that's farther afield, you know, the opportunity to do a, you know, a pilot bike share or something like that to help people, if time is not of the essence and they can, you know, afford in terms of time to park farther, they might be able to use a bike to get into town. I don't know how viable that is today. But again, you start to see growth in the town. You see some, you know, the study area pushing north. That could be an opportunity to utilize some of the alternatives and get people to where they need to be without having to park them right there. This is just a possible pricing scheme. And the way it works is that if you're parking for a short term, under an hour, you pay 50 cents. If you're there for the second hour, the rate goes up in the second hour. So again, it's that mindset where, wait a second, it's gonna cost me a little bit more to park for that second hour. Maybe I'll go to an area that is free or that is less expensive. And then you could kind of extrapolate there. The reason why we mentioned a place like Yonkers or other areas is they also do things. My office is in Osning. There's some parking meters. And again, you don't have meters, but I'm just gonna explain an example here. There's a button on the meter that gives you 10 minutes for free. So it allows the person who's running into the dry cleaners to not have to pay at all because they know that they're gonna be a high-turnover parker. They're only gonna be there for a brief moment. So the idea is you can be flexible. You don't wanna make it sound like you're saddling your own residents with unreasonable parking. The idea is to keep the curb moving so that businesses can get, you know, get the most out of their location. I mean, they're there for a reason. So if people can't get to them, that's when you have the issues with parking on residential streets and things like that that spill over. Because to one of the points made earlier, it is probably easier to park on Clinton than it is to park way up here on Main Street, even though, you know, that's where you'd want. You'd want the person to park on Main. Consider incentivizing town hall parking for discounted, long-term parking. So if there are, you know, and this might be something to take to the business community, you know, if that, you know, can, if that is well-received, you might be able to incentivize the employees of those businesses to either park at the north end of Main or park here and walk into town. That might need to be coupled with, you know, some pedestrian enhancements along the way. Again, making it a viable walking path for the most part is what's important. And then consider supplementing the parking analysis of fall data this year. Now, I know I spoke with the supervisor, the bridge project, if it's happening in the fall, and if it's still happening in the fall, would not be a good time. So that's something that could be done in 2024. You know, again, the idea is to get good concrete data in the fall to kind of make sure that these numbers make sense with what is perceived to be the busiest time in Hudson Valley, which is the fall. So that's kind of a high level. The report, the report is, there's a lot more numbers and detail and jargon in the report. So I don't wanna drone on and on here. I hope that provided a high level. The bottom line is that you can be flexible. You can try things and fail and try other things. I think you have a good resource already. It's just trying to leverage it and maximize it is the idea.
I wanna talk about first that parking inventory tool that we have that basically shows all the parking available.
Ah, yes.
Yeah.
So we built, and I can make this publicly available. In fact, it's really just a website link. But we built, as part of the project, we built the town a GIS-based and web-based model that essentially, you essentially input, we imported all of the parking inventory in the study area by street face, so which side of the street, how many parking spaces, and then we fed it with data. So if you pull it up on the screen, you'll see areas that are color-coded in green. Those are the areas that are, you know, 50% or less utilized, all the way up to red, which are the areas that are, you know, 80, 90% utilized.
Are you able to give that link to Josh and he can put it on the Facebook page so that it's available?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
And so again, GIS data is only good as data that's inputted. So the idea would be that the town now has it built, and anytime it wants to obtain parking data, and it doesn't need to hire someone like me to get it. It could be done as part of, any application that's before the planning board might have to produce a parking study to satisfy the shared parking agreement requirement, if that's where the town goes. They hire a parking consultant, they do an analysis. That data can then be fed in, and you can continuously make informed decisions about your downtown. It just doesn't need to live with this data, you know? You can, what's going on in 2024 or 2025 and make adjustments. Maybe the pricing of parking in the circle to Willow helps, you know? When some people push out a little bit, it opens up some more spaces. Maybe it doesn't, and you have to, you know, rejigger. So hopefully that helps.
Yeah, that certainly did. Sorry, question the board members have for Frank? No? I mean, I just, I think it's important for the public to understand. We wanted to get a... We wanted to get a, look, I went into this thinking, you know, look, we might need to build another municipal lot to replace the ones we've lost. And I kind of came out of this, you know, realizing that there really is adequate parking and, you know, on Main Street. It's just people are using it in different ways. And so we need to encourage turnover from the traffic circle down to Willow. And, you know, one of the ways that we're gonna start doing that, probably starting April 1st, is going to be enforcement of the two-hour minimum. And this is the perfect time to do that because we're gonna lose 10 parking spots because of the bridge project. So we are, so we are gonna start getting people used to that in advance. We don't just want to spring that out starting in the summer. We want to get them used to that. So I have asked the police chief to come up with a plan to start doing that so we can start getting residents used to that. And hopefully this will start to encourage turnover that we all need because we've got people that are parking in front of businesses all day long that are taking up spots and we really can't have that. I mean, it's detrimental to, you know, the businesses that are right there.
That's great. Some of these machines you were talking about, like as far as to do, I mean, was it around $10,000 for like any kind of like newer parking or some of these apps we were talking about? Was it, I don't know.
You're talking about the physical sanction?
Yes. What do they typically go for, like $10,000? So a price like this, it would take a little, that's a huge investment.
Well, the other, right. And the app-based parking, the way the village, the village's system works is just a sign.
Okay.
And it has a zone number on it. And when you download the Park Mobile app, you know, if you're, if it senses your location, you're allowed to, it'll find the zone that you're currently staying next to and you just interacted that way. So you essentially are holding a parking meter.
How much, I mean, did you find out how much?
No, I actually looked into that. So I reached out and spoke to the, I wanted to have this discussion first, but I, so I reached out to Park Mobile, spoke to their sales rep. Essentially, there really is no savings to do with the village because the user is the one that pays for the cost of the system. It's basically, let's say you're paying for an hour of parking and it's a dollar. The user would pay a dollar forty and 40 cents of that would go towards the cost of the app and the fees. So basically, you would, you've got the app, you have the signs up. People would go to the website, they could save their information in there. We would have to create a zone and in the zone would be every single parking spot that would be in the Main Street zone. You would park your car, you would log in for the app, you would pay for parking. And then on the enforcement side of things, a police officer would log in and they could see all the folks that were currently paying for parking. They would drive down Main Street. They would see, you know, whether or not people are there and they haven't paid for it. There would be enforcement piece that was gonna happen. But, you know, it is pretty easy to go with the app-based system. It's really not that much money. It's really just a question of, do we want to start charging for parking? I think personally that we want to start with the enforcement piece first and see if that, you know, makes any noticeable difference before we get into charging.
Did you ever discuss, discuss with the chief on that? Because I know how extended the day, you know, as far as your manpower. Is that something that's feasible? Maybe we'll start with that.
Oh, no, yeah, it's in the works.
Okay, yeah, I just want to know the feasibility because we do have car accidents and other things to deal with. No, I mean, we have what?
Yeah, I mean, the chief and I have been working on this. It's under code and it's important.
Do I want everybody there on Main Street or do you have other places to patrol?
Yeah, I mean, I trust the chief to work out the manpower issues. I mean, look, there may be, there may be times when, look, there's multiple accidents and for a couple hours of that day, you know, we can't enforce. And then we'll go back. But if we're serious about this, we gotta work with the department app and.
And it is only eight to five on the Saturday.
Yeah.
Right, so it's not like.
So Sunday, nothing, right? Sunday would be nothing.
Whatever it currently says.
I believe the code does not contain Sunday. I mean, I can give you an idea, a better idea of how much enforcement we can provide at the level of resource we have now.
Did you ever look, I know you looked at two days, but did you ever look at Sunday? Because I find Sunday on Main Street is pretty crappy.
We did not look at Sunday, but we, you know, again.
Because you think about tourists and, I mean, we also have residents that go at the establishments on Richard. It is pretty crappy.
Sure, that's a good thing to know.
Yeah. But some of these also, a lot of businesses are closed. One of the few boutiques are closed. I don't know which area they're in. I'm talking about Fiddlesticks, the restaurant, right? Canterbury, the restaurant, coffee shop, correct? The sweet shop. I could name more. Pizza Farmhouse, all those are open on Sunday.
Sure. It's a good point. The other thing with the payment, and again, it's never, you have a revenue now. That's one of the other positives to a parking scheme is that if the town now has a source of revenue that it can then implement to achieve, you know, and usually what we talk about is keeping it in the realm of infrastructure, right? So you now have funds for traffic calming. Hey, you know, people are speeding down my street. Well, you know, wouldn't it be nice if we had funds for, you know, traffic calming devices or speed humps or any of the, anything in the realm of trying to solve, you know, what are congestion problems or things like that? You have that revenue now that you can turn into solutions. So it does help itself. It does help the town in and of itself maintain. Right now, that those spaces are highly desired and there's no exchange of money. It kind of bucks economics when you think about it. If you desire something or if something's hotly desired, there's usually a price to pay for it. So that's the idea of it, in the abstract, of course. But it's not necessarily a popular topic. So I'm not really, I get it. Taking my fair share of.
Look, if you just ask them to present options for the problem, it doesn't mean we have to take them. But, I mean, you know, I think it's definitely other options. And certainly the board will have to decide if we're going to place a, you know, pay-for-parking scheme as far as enforcing the code. That's something that's on the code. The police department is supposed to enforce the code. Simple as that. So is it, are there any other questions for Frank? No? Okay, so thank you, Frank.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Of course.
Good to see you.
Do you want me to hang around or?
Don't.
Just.
Yeah, I think we're done. So I'll follow up with, I can give you the PowerPoint presentation if you want. Yeah, and then the fresh GIs. Yeah, we'll look at that after.
Parking's important. Spend a lot of time and money on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's the back. You're probably gonna want that.
Yes.
Extensive parking stuff we've had here. He went to the back. Okay. All right. So after hanging back. Can I get through this in a half an hour? Let's see. Now I'm gonna, we're gonna have a speed round of getting through, of getting through this.
I believe it when I see it.
I'm not, I'm not gonna, look, I promise I won't talk to you.
I know. Judge, 8:30, Saturday, 10:00.
No, she'll have to. You got parking. Eight or two?
Yeah, that's why we've been here for two hours. So that would make that, we need to go to bathroom.
All right, so. So next up, you know, thank you for, you know, this was a very long presentation by Frank. I think there's a lot of good information in this. I will certainly share the GIS mapping tool that we have. It basically has a complete legal parking inventory in the entire study area. Our planner can use it as well when we're looking at things in the future. But I think the public will want to see where all the spots are in the study area. And we'll get this up too, as well as Frank's presentation. I'll post it on the website in the next day or so. Moving on, we have a resolution to approve the OC Department of Planning Referral Guidelines, IMA. So you may recall, this is where the county planning, they would like to limit this, you know, certain amounts of referrals that are going forward. They really only want to look at the larger stuff. So they're asking every municipality in Orange County to approve this. I don't see any reason not to do it. It seems, seems, you know, pretty reasonable to me if you look at the, what they want to be exempted. So unless there's any questions, I'd like to authorize this tonight. Yeah?
So.
Okay. Whereas the Town of Cornwall has received an intermunicipal agreement from the Orange County Department of Planning for referral of matters under the general municipal law. And whereas the Town Board wishes to enter into the intermunicipal agreement with the county, now therefore be resolved as follows. The Town Board of the Town of Cornwall does hereby approve the said intermunicipal agreement with the county, a copy of which is attached here too. And two, the Town Board hereby authorizes the Town Supervisor to execute the intermunicipal agreement with the county and any documents necessary to carry out the terms and provisions thereof. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wigerhousky?
Yes. Next up, I have a motion to approve the Justice Court audit for FY 2022. We had this last week, a copy of the findings. Presumably, you've had a chance to review the findings for both judges, Judge Navarro and Judge Biesecker. If the board is in agreement, we can adopt the resolution to accept the Justice Court audit for FY 2022. Whereas the Unified Justice Court Act requires the town justices annually to provide their court records and dockets for audit and that the results of the audit be entered into the minutes of the Town Board proceedings. And whereas UCS has requested that the town provide copies of audits or examinations for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the Town Board hereby authorizes the supervisor to provide UCS with the most recent audit or examination reports for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022 and that the town clerk is requested and directed to provide a certified copy of this resolution to be included with the submission of the audit or examination reports to UCS. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wigerhousky?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution for the County Office for the Aging. It's a 2023 extension for senior transportation. We do this every year, it's just to prove, to extend the contract. Whereas the town, whereas the town annually enters into a contract with the County of Orange for services to provide transportation for senior citizens to Munger Cottage and for related activities. Whereas the Town of Cornwall has received the 2023 amendment and extension agreement for vendor services from the Office of the Aging between County of Orange and Town of Cornwall. And whereas the Town Board wishes to once again enter into said agreement with the county, now therefore be resolved as follows. The Town Board hereby agrees to enter into the said agreement, or the said amendment and extension agreement, a copy of which is annexed here too. That the Town Board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms therein. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wigerhousky?
Yes. Next up, this is just an acknowledgement. This is for towing. Chen, you've received all of the, all the paperwork and we've done the inspections. There's no issues. So this is just one, approval of the towing license?
That's for the new towing?
Yeah, this is for express towing.
Yeah.
So can I get a motion to approve the application for express towing, for their towing license application?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wigerhousky?
Yes. Next up, we have 2020, oh, it says 2023 year-end budget adjustments. It's really, it's 2022 final budget adjustments, the ones that you saw last week that Pam put together, where it's basically just going plus and minus the different funds and the different lines in the funds. So we have those. We have started the audit for the town. That's, that started this week, so this needs to be done tonight. You've now had this for a week, so this is for the final budget adjustments. We do this every year. And then we have the proposed 2022 ARPA expenses that would be applied to these different projects and different funds for a total of, in 2022, we are taking $350,000 in ARPA to apply it to these different funds for these specific projects. After we subtract that amount from the current amount of ARPA that we have, we end up with $576,451.74. That would be our ARPA balance that we would have after we do these that will be available to apply to expenses and projects this fiscal year. Or we have until December 31st of 2024 to spend the rest of it. So we basically have this amount of 576K to be used over the next two fiscal years. If we do this tonight, this amount right here, this would basically increase our fund balances in these different funds. And so this is also something that needs to be done as part of the, as part of the audit as well because this is, when you're going through all of the accounts, all of the funds, this would basically help us determine where we come out with our fund balances that we would have looking forward to the next fiscal year.
So you would like to have this just done?
Well, we need to, yes.
Okay.
So I would ask the board, if I could get a motion for the board to approve the 2022 final budget adjustments and the application of the ARPA expenses to the 2022 budget. Is that outlined in the document? Can I get a motion on that to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, but I want to note that some of the suggestions I had made in the previous budget, some of the reductions that were done, now they're being, are they being put in using ARPA money?
So what, what happens is, the way you do this is.
I just want to be clear on that because I made suggestions about like some things did need to be reduced in the budget. And now I see ARPA being used.
So we did not, so some of the suggestions, for instance, we decreased the, we took, I believe it was, we took about a, what was it, about $75,000 or $100,000 out of the 2023 budget. We actually physically took it out, people weren't taxed on it. So now if we want to do those items, we have to apply ARPA to that. That's, that's how we're applying it. So instead of, so basically.
Okay. I just want to see a more immediate use of the money because not waiting till the next year because the purpose of this, of the ARPA was to help during the pandemic. And there are things that we could be using this for. I'm just suggesting like we start going forward, we should be using it currently. Like we shouldn't wait till the next year to do this.
So the way ARPA works is you have to expend the money first on a project and then you reimburse. So if we have, as projects have come up, so for instance, last year, we knew we wanted to do the Main Street parking study, which is right here. We paid for the project at a general fund. And then you wait until this time of year when you see where everything comes in and then you apply it to that. So, so if there are projects that the board wants to do, we should talk about them. And then, we will then pay for it out of the general fund. And then at any time during the year, the board can say, Josh, I'd like to apply the ARPA. And then at, at any time during the year, the board can say, Josh, I'd like to apply the ARPA to that expenditure we've already made. Or, you know, so on and so forth. But that, that's how it works. Basically like a reimbursement of something you already paid for. So, okay. So can I get a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved. Um, Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Um, Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehousey?
Yes. Okay. Next we have, so this is actually a question for Steve on the road opening permit fee. I don't know that we're actually going to act on this right now because.
We wanted to figure on, Josh, if you recall, I'm sorry, I don't have a chance to speak with Tom.
Yeah.
But is what the appropriate fee should be. I realize that Tom's bound it up between one fifty and two fifty is what people.
Anything's better than nothing.
But we need to decide on what's right for Cornwall. We can't just pick a number out of the hat.
I mean, there's definitely costs of the hall. I drive, I check the driveway, I drive back. You know, bring a check down, pay the cashes the check and reimburse the check. There's definitely.
Well, let me confer with Tom between now and April and we'll come back with a number.
And is there also a code revision do we have to make? Are we currently allowed to charge a fee for it?
Yeah, we'll probably have to do it as a local law. And a code, and, and a fee, schedule revision too.
So, so that's, that's wait till April. Next we have the yard waste pickup. So this was something else as well. So I know just looking at chapter ninety four garbage, rubbish and refuse provision, which I've looked at, we may also have to make a change to allow, I mean, right now it, it says, it doesn't, I don't think it even mentions yard waste or, it doesn't really spell it out specifically. And there's mention of thirty two gallon cans, which is the current size can you're supposed to have when you're doing garbage.
Are you looking for weight?
Just the weight. To be honest, doing yard waste takes a lot of time. And we have those cans.
Yeah.
Half the time we destroy the cans, try and empty them, then we're buying people cans, bags, you throw them away, you go to the next stop.
People are getting hurt because they're lifting up cans that they don't know how heavy they are.
We're supposed to have weight for climbing.
Yeah.
We technically have, I don't know, I believe the code says a hundred pounds, which is about a hundred and fifty two. Back to my house, ash or ash cans are, I don't know, it's heavily outdated.
Well, it sounds like we need to look at our garbage, rubbish and refuse, section ninety four, chapter ninety four in order to do this. So it sounds like, you know, me and Steve should talk about that.
I'll take a look at it. My recollection is that there was a policy that was adopted by resolution in regard to the weight. If it's in the code, it's in the code. We'll have to change the code.
Okay.
If it's, if it's just a policy that was adopted, then the board can act by resolution. But I'm talking with Tom about the, um, road opening fee anyway, we could talk about this too. And of course we'll be doing.
Yeah, we're, we're going to. I know we want to get to it because we're about to get into yard waste cleanup season when everyone's doing their yards and leaves and sticks. But, you know, maybe, I did actually speak to the local today about this and I know they are going to say something to the effect of, the town would like to move in this direction. So until the town officially does that, if you want, you know, residents, you can start to do this already. You don't have to wait. You can start, you know, as a way to, you know, try to encourage people to start doing it before we can start acquiring.
I'd honestly say we're probably eighty five percent there.
Yeah, so it's just, yeah, it's like there's extra like twenty five, thirty percent of people.
People that do use them and use a lot of them and make them heavy.
Yeah. All right. So next up, we have a. So let me see here. So where are we going to?
I thought you went to table this.
Yeah, so we're actually going to table this for reliable glass door. Yeah, reliable glass and doors said they could actually come in a little bit cheaper on their price. So we're going to allow them to do that.
It's under the procurement policy, so there's no problem with it.
Yeah, I'll go back and table it because I actually have another question for you on this too, Steve, so if we add this to the list of things to talk about.
Okay. We have a resolution to authorize a street sweeper purchase. As you're aware, we, we have passed a bond resolution to pay for this. This would allow, this would allow us to order the street sweeper. We obviously don't have to pay for it until it comes in, but this allows us to order it. It's going to take twelve to sixteen months to get it anyway, so we need to get this into the queue. So. Whereas the town of Cornwall wishes to purchase a street sweeper with a Freightliner cab and chassis and a Johnson sweeper body off public bid, source well contract number zero nine three zero two one dash BUC for a purchase price of three hundred and thirty six thousand, nine hundred and twenty five dollars. And whereas the funds for the said purchase had previously been secured through approved bonding, now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby approves the proposed purchase of the said street sweeper for three hundred and thirty six thousand, three hundred and thirty six thousand, nine hundred and twenty five dollars. And that the town board hereby authorizes the town supervisor to execute any and all documents necessary for purchase of the street sweeper. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehousey?
Yes. Okay. Next up, I have a resolution approving the Skyhawk Summer Sports Camp Contract for the twenty twenty three summer. As you can see, this, this basically lists all of the camps that we have and the weeks and the whole contract is authorizing me to sign this. So that the rec department can start, can start trying to fill these slots. If I could, whereas the town board has received a proposal from Skyhawk Sports Academy LLC to conduct a skills based program for youth during the summer on town property. And whereas the town is willing to approve the said program under the terms and conditions of the agreement attached here too, now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby agrees to enter into an agreement with Skyhawks on the proposal terms. That the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute a contract for the same and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms therein. Can I get a motion to approve?
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Yes. The next up is Highland Engine's annual Easter egg hunt that they've been doing for decades. This is just, can I get a motion to approve Highland Engine number one and requesting use of town hall property for the annual Easter egg hunt that takes place on April eighth, twenty twenty three? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'm sorry.
It's in the morning.
It's in the morning.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that wasn't. They'll, yeah, they'll, they'll get a flyer out. I'm sorry.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehousey?
Yes. Um, next up, we have a memo from Chief Geppert. He is, he would like us to consider surplusing the following patrol vehicles. We have car four oh seven, a twenty twelve Ford Interceptor with almost a, with a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it. We also have car four twelve, which is a twenty fourteen Ford Interceptor sedan with a hundred and forty one thousand miles on it. He's asking us to allow us to surplus it so we can sell these vehicles. If there's no objections, I would ask the board to authorize, you know, us to be able to surplus these police vehicles.
So moved.
Can I get a motion to approve? Thank you.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Did you call me? Yes?
Yeah, did they call you?
No, sorry.
Mr. Wodehousey?
It's okay. Next up, we're not going to act on this tonight, but the police, and I don't even think we can. This is a, the, Chief Geppert has asked that we, we would consider allowing part-time officers that work for the town to also be able to work part-time in other municipalities. You know, he, he thinks that you can't currently do that. He thinks it would make it so it would be easier finding part-time officers, something that we need. But I believe, I don't know if this is something that we can just do. It looks like, so he gave us the, the town code link. So it looks like we're going to have to make a, a change.
Yeah, is there a collective bargaining issue with this or no?
Not that I'm aware.
Well, you know, we can check. We'll talk to.
Service issue? No, collective bargaining agreement. You can't replace a full-time officer with, to part-time officer.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to, so this, yeah, this kind of needs a little more discussion. We'll, we'll ask Joe DePalma to, yeah.
So the, the town code doesn't distinguish between full and part-time officer for this section. I don't know that it does anywhere in the code.
No, I'm concerned about the CB though. The CB might.
The collective bargaining agreement.
Right. The part-time officers have their own. I can't imagine there'd be something in there that, that would restrict them in, in order from working somewhere else. I mean, I can definitely check into it.
Think that you're right, but I wouldn't want to have the town act without checking it first. That's all.
Absolutely.
So we will check with labor council on that?
I'll take a look at the code.
Okay. But definitely, I mean, if it's something allowable, I think we should, we should do it because it'll make it easier for us to fill those spots. Okay. Next up, we have Rings Pond Treatment Permit Application. So I'm, I'm just putting this on here because historically, for the past, I don't know how long it's been, what, three, four? Okay, so five years. So for five years roughly, we've been treating Rings Pond with copper sulfate. And we're actually going to, we're going to discontinue that practice because it's actually harmful to the pond and it's, it's actually making the algae problem worse. So we're going to, we're not going to be doing that this year. We are working on other plans to deal with the algae either through dredging and other, you know, treatments and other things with, with the Conservation Advisory Committee, but I just wanted to make, you know, before we, you know, it has been practiced for the past five years, but, you know, in talking to some of the other board members, Tim, talking to the CAC, I, I believe the board's kind of, you know, in favor of stopping to use this copper sulfate because it's really not good for the pond. But I just want the board to, you know, agree to this before we stop it. And I will certainly, we have though, for a number of years, we've had a resident who's, you know, offered to pay for this each year. So I am going to thank him for his, you know, allowing us to do this. But we are going to discontinue the practice going forward. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'm not doing, speaking real quick to public, it's kind of like on my agenda, listening to the public of Cornwall. Rings Pond is a centerpiece of Cornwall and it has been about sixty plus years living here. And I've been noticing, as everywhere else, I've been noticing, it's, it's deteriorating at an accurate pace. Probably because of the use of, of copper sulfate. Copper sulfate destroyed the lake. It's in the process of destroying the pond. Rings Pond needs to be dredged the worst way possible. I'm in the process of working with engineers, site planners and people to, to get rings ponds ready to potential plan together, engineer, to come up with a cost factor and then come up with some funding, bring some tax money back to the, toward Cornwall Committee in the form of a grant to get that pond to be at night direct cost to immediate taxpayer for this project. There's more to come. I'm working with across the side, our time, the call, Conservation Advisory Committee and other people. Anybody else wants to join in, please, ideas, let me know. I'm all ears. You know, if I'll get back in next year, I want to get this done before I get out. It's that strong for me because I live here, I've been staying here all my life. I got grandkids here. I remember my oldest son, he's thirty three now, and he's a teenager fishing there. You can't even fish in that pond anymore. It's that shallow and so hot. They used to build the ponds, no one in the ponds, too shallow, too hot. So my, my goal is to revitalize the pond, bring it back to its original, you know, so original, I guess, you know, source or, you know, life and, and bring, and like, bring many parts back to it according to life, so on and so on, and, and improve the centerpiece of Cornwall. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, our, our hope on this is that we can get some either state legislative grant or, or there's some other source of funding we can use to pay for the, you know, dry or wet dredge. But we're still kind of working on, you know, getting numbers because that'll determine, you know, which direction we go in. But it's, it's definitely on our radar of something we want to try to effectuate some change there this year if we can.
We should have numbers for the cost factor and which direction to go in, definitely by next month. We're hoping to do like, if, if we do this project and everything works out fine with the funding and, and the engineering, we hope to do it by the fall, when the project, the best time to go.
Okay, so next up, we have training. I have here the approval for the New York State Association of Town Superintendent of Highways Annual Highway School at Cornell from June fourth through June seventh. The cost of the conference is a hundred and ten dollars and three nights at one thirty four a night for the hotel. Can I get a motion to approve this for the highway superintendent?
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehousey?
Yes. Next up, I have the, I have an authorization for the twenty twenty three New York State Town Clerks Association Annual Conference, which takes place in Syracuse, April twenty third to the twenty fifth. Registration fee of one twenty five and hotel accommodations for two nights is five hundred and forty three dollars includes bills and parking. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehousey?
Yes. I'd almost rather go to Syracuse than New York City for the AOT. I mean, you guys get to go to better places. Sure, sure, sure.
Can you go first with the committee report since mine is yours?
Sure.
All right. On the CAC, we gathered on March eighth and Mr. McCarty was, joined us and Tim talked about, he concerned, his concerns were about the pond and the objects. So we're happy to have him on. The next, the few events, annual celebration for CAC is on Saturday, April twenty second. And Riverkeeper Sweep at Donahue Memorial Park is on May sixth. And moving to Cornwall Youth Committee. Youth, Cornwall Youth Committee is going to be a gathering quarterly going forward and they're going to be having other meetings as a work session. So I'll put, the ones that it's open to public is going to be, the next one is June eighth at the Farm House at six thirty P M. Under the umbrella of Cornwall Youth Committee, we could, we did establish Cornwall Youth Garden Club successfully. And they have already, we have already met three times on Saturday from nine to ten thirty. And we plan to do it every week actually, since the planting season is right here. They already did collaborate with Cornwall Garden Club, I believe, and they're going to be working on the few projects together. And last but not least, let's save the best for the last one, is Music in the Park is going to be starting on Sunday, June fourth. And it's going to end on Sunday, August twenty seventh with twelve concerts with help of Tom, thank you, in advance. Mark Henderson and I had some ideas about giving the bandstand in town a little bit facelift and making it more inviting and pleasant. So Tom, we are working with Tom to establish that. And that was my report. Thank you.
Okay, Tim?
I'm going to do highway first. Highway Department Assistant Sanitation Christmas Tree Pickup. Double pickup of cars, install the retaining wall, highway garage, send, send in a thousand in front of the, that's his call. Tom, is that that new power designed for the library garage?
Yeah.
Beautiful. Funeral detail for the unfortunate passing of the Cornwall, that's a DPW employee, Tim Sabbath. Windstorm two twenty three, multiple trees down, cleaning up by Hayes and Taylor, Alakia Ridge, town parks. Serviced all these workers, chainsaws, double drawers, saws and leaf blowers. Dicks along, Long Helen Road Extension, Summer Road, the Creamery Drive, which I guess was well blown out, leaf vacuum, Ashbrook, Boulevard, Ridge Road, it's street sweep, Main Street Business District due to unwarm temperatures in February. Measured silt and pinefore.
Uh, measured, uh, silt and pine for the possible dredging project. Thank you, Tom. Uh, worked on a pond drainage issue, if we could also, could face again in upcoming months, I guess with a woman. Uh, install drainage pipe, uh, and swale, uh, and sixty-five attic air road, thank you. Uh, cold patch, a lot of pad holes, townwide, pad started for snow events on two-one, two-twenty-eight. Washed and sorted, uh, off trucks of outdoor storms, repaired, uh, damaged dump loads and garbage truck, uh, incident and Iowa crew departments. Assistant Orange County Drain, location of bridge street replacement for Main Street and locate, uh, buried manholes for N H E and ongoing sewer line restoration. Mechanic, uh, two-ten F five fifty radiation replacement, two-oh-six active routine service, nineteen ninety-six international. No power issue, replaced view filter, routine service for senior bus, two-fourteen, twenty-fourteen. Small pack and repair broken, our passengers see, routine service, knife replacement, I wood trippers, a wood tripper. Two thousand fourteen international plant truck routine service, two thousand ten international plant truck routine service, broken hydraulic lines. And two thousand ten international recycled side loader replaced broken hydraulic lines.
Sometimes you just get pressure.
Okay.
Nature of the business.
Uh, for Camel, uh, the Fifth Cliff, Allen Street. They removed all slugs and, uh, snow ice removal from Fifth Cliff, water, with water supply plant, pump stations, every day same task. Clean skimmers, clean skimmers, uh, exercise flush primary valves, waste valves, waste second day slugs. Removed all rags debris, uh, collection system quarter, uh, quarterly, cleaning at, uh, B D T S pump station. Ten, clean the double, uh, trouble, clean trouble spots, collection system, the main, uh, the main two lines running into First Cliff. The flow is average, uh, loss yield was point zero four nine, uh, M V D is, uh, per minute is one point two. Uh, excuse me, point one two, therefore definitely good limits. The B O D was seven point two, the limit is three zero. So that's looking good and, uh, T S S is total suspension silox is, uh, three point five, the limit is thirty. Uh, many, you know, we don't need all that. Uh, but so it's good, you know, good, uh, uh, for color form, uh, being monitored only in November to sample drain away, no issues, looking pretty good. And, uh, and, uh, that's, 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 alright. And that's what I don't have. I don't have shore, but I'm sorry.
So I might move down.
You have shore?
Yeah, yeah, here you go. I'll pass it on to her.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Uh, shore road, I'll plant, uh, maintenance, same thing, clean out, uh, the first two pumps, clogged, uh, heavy lags, debris, part of service, and the Carter slug pump, service, uh, end boundary slug pump. Flushed out, uh, the constant chemical feed line, uh, clean trickle filters, snow ice removal, uh, collection system. Ten did a quarterly cleaning on all pump stations, civil lateral inspection repaired, one forty-seven Main Street. Ten did a monthly cleaning, a trouble spot to clean systems, twenty twenty-two, two twenty-two, two twenty-three civil lateral inspections, new service. And eleven Mcains, that was, was just done. Uh, civil lateral inspection repaired, base one, sixty-nine Neo Avenue. And the flow, flow is, uh, was seven, point seven two eight, uh, minute downs, uh, today, uh, limit is one point five, so it's under. B O D is, uh, fifteen point four, again, the limit is thirty. T S S total suspension, uh, silox, seven point one, again, the limit is thirty. And chloroform's being monitored and that's it.
Okay, Carrie?
And twenty last month, the building department issued nineteen permits, twenty-five certificates of compliance for certificates of occupancy, uh, did fifty-one onsite inspections, twenty-two fire inspections. Uh, six signs were removed. They took in four thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars in permit fees. Three thousand two hundred dollars for municipal circuits either. Uh, new planning board project opened this, this month, one, and there were no zoning board projects open that month.
Okay. Kenny?
Alright, so the, uh, Senior Advisory Committee, uh, we did meet on, uh, February twenty-seventh and, um, basically planned out, um, the year. Uh, our next meeting will be on, um, Monday, the actually, March twenty-seventh, uh, and we're going to actually coordinate all the activities that we have planned with, uh, Recreation Department. Um, so looking forward to that. Um, like a bus tour of Cornwall, which Betty Germain's did and she, uh, she's highly in demand, so she's gonna do it again. Um, the Main Street Beautification Committee, we met on March thirteenth. Um, we did, um, have a presentation the month before, uh, with, by Kate Kruhsky of the, um, C C A C uh, talking about, uh, pollinator pathway projects and how, um, this committee could help. So, um, we are definitely coming up, uh, part of our planting plan for this year, um, adding some pollinator plants, um, as, as well. Um, we also, um, the committee met and looked at, uh, different, uh, chair sets and, um, the, the ones that they want are very colorful, which is, which is great. They're very sturdy. They're over fifty pounds, which is good in terms of them not being moved rather easily. Uh, and I will, um, email the proposal and what they would like, um, you to consider. Um, First Cliff Water, um, there have been no repairs, no issues this month to report. Um, the, uh, lighting, um, we are in the process now, uh, with real term in terms of procurement. Um, I believe there's going to be a, um, an installation kickoff meeting, which I'm hoping I'll be included with since I actually worked for two and a half years on the inventory. And, uh, I'd like to see this through.
Sure.
Um, and then the last thing is, because they're going through the scope of the work, project schedule and the roles and responsibilities that we have, is I know, um, our Highway Department Supervisor or Superintendent will be in, included in the process and I know it's a very important part and we're also balancing planning the county's, um, project as well. So hopefully we get them installed before the county begins.
Yeah, and what I would say about that is that, uh, so the, we're, my office is managing the day-to-day of this because this is a day-to-day management of this project. Um, we, right now, are dealing with, um, filling out certain agreements that we have to have, um, in order for, uh, real terms to be able to order the products. Managing where the lights are gonna go, when they get delivered is, and, and then there's some other stuff as well. Um, as far as any kickoff meeting, certainly once we get closer to project, I would almost call it a pre-construction meeting. Right now, we're dealing with the back office paperwork to get some order.
Right, because everything has already been like decided and, and ordered and everything.
Yes, but, but, well, no, it's not been ordered yet, so we, we.
Oh, they haven't? Okay.
So what has to happen is we have to, they just gave us purchase orders the other day. Those have to be signed off on. They have to order. We have to receive it. Once we get it in place, then we'll have to have essentially a pre-construction kickoff meeting to figure out the timing of where and when they're gonna work throughout the town. Anyone that's involved in the project will be invited to the pre-construction, um, kickoff meeting.
Definitely wants to see this through. Um, and, um, as you mentioned, did attend the Association of Towns meeting. Um, and I learned a great deal about, uh, zoning. Um, it was a very valuable workshop and, and thank you. You know, we, we attended and I think it does help us become more educated. And the last thing I just wanted to mention, on March nineteenth, they, the county does have a program and if you're interested, I'll send the links. It's called March Madness. And on the nineteenth, I did attend a, um, a Zoom workshop on, uh, tree regulations and ordinance. And instead of looking for the width of the trees, they're actually talking about regulating by canopy, which I thought was a very interesting, um, idea. So again, maybe that's something when we actually get the tree ordinance, um, there might be something we wanna look at as well. That's all I have to report, but I'll send you the link so you can actually.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's gonna be very helpful for you.
Okay, so, um, Deputy Supervisor, he's been working on a cleanup project.
So, excuse me, I have two things to report.
Sure.
Um, Economic Development met last week. They are beginning to put together ideas, uh, to apply for the County Tourism Grant. I think so. In process. But I got some good news today from, uh, Lee Zimmer, who is the Project Coordinator of D O T up in the Kipsey. Um, they have approved, um, signage to go along Route thirty-two, basically no littering signs. They, they've actually ordered the signs and once they're done and complete, they will be installing them. D O T has taken care of that, which makes sense since it's a, it's a state road.
Yeah.
Um, the group has asked for a number of other things and, um, I haven't heard as to whether any of those are gonna be approved, but, but when I hear, I'll let everyone know.
Okay, great.
Did they talk anything about like the cleanup schedule? Because I know the fact that there's all that trash there, whichever one's cleaning up, that they have to come get it. They have no plan?
Tommy would probably have a better answer than you.
Yeah, I sure do.
Alright, so the, the D O T is, is doing? Okay.
One of the things that this group is asking for is to close off the unpaved areas, just put guardrails in front of them. I don't know how realistic that is. The D O T is very slow in response, never rate it.
Especially because there seems to be a lot of tractor trailers being parked there during the week as well.
Uh, I, I communicated with the chief about the, the one or two in particular that are in the, um, turnoff, the first turnoff south of Quaker Avenue. Apparently it's legal.
Okay, um, so for New Windsor EMS, for the, uh, February report for personnel, we have no staff injuries. All yearly mandated classes were completed, um, unfor- uh, regretfully, uh, life member, board member, uh, board member Virgil, uh, Jimino passed away. I, I hope I'm not mispronouncing his name there. Um, operational, um, we had three hundred and fifty total dispatches, a hundred percent of the calls were covered. We only had two hundred and one calls in February of twenty twenty-two, so clearly we are up, um, in the number of calls. Uh, there, there are over seven hundred and twenty-five calls for the year, twenty-three percent increase over twenty twenty-two. Two hundred and fifty-six responses, uh, were in the town of New Windsor. Fifty-two of those responses were in the town of Cornwall and thirteen in the village of C O H. There was also, uh, mutual aid, uh, nineteen to the town of Newburgh, three to the city of Newburgh, two to Woodbury, five to Highland Falls. Um, average, uh, average response time in New Windsor is seven minutes and four seconds. Average response time in Cornwall, five, uh, five minutes and fifty-six. Almost just shy of six minutes in Cornwall. Um, thirty percent of the calls were nineteen Laurel Landmark making response times very low. So it looks like we're going to certain places again and again.
Right.
Um, the average response time in C O H is seven minutes, um, based on lower call volume. Uh, let me see what else here. Um, vehicles, all vehicles are in service. First time in the agency history, they now have six ambulances on the road and active. They have new replacement parts placed in heart monitors, um. They are having serious issues obtaining certain medications. Um, most vendors are telling them that it takes months to obtain medications, so that's, that's unfortunate. Um, must be supply chain issues like everyone is having, um, these days. Um, or, or who knows what they are.
Manufacturers.
Okay, manufacturers, okay, yeah. We're just not manufacturing enough or they're keeping supply back so the prices go up or something or?
It was functional, but, you know.
Oh, okay.
Which is a lot better than uses pain.
Yeah.
Than, than morphine because it does not have the fast sedative.
Sure. Um, for the, uh, town of Cornwall Police Department, um, for, uh, for last month, we had six hundred calls for service. Five thousand one hundred and ninety miles driven. We had eighty-five traffic and appearance tickets issues, eight parking tickets issues. Eight motor vehicle accidents reported. Um, we had two nine eleven hangups, eighteen alarm calls, nine ambulance requests, ten animal complaints. One criminal mischief, twenty disabled vehicles, five domestic incidents, five parking complaints. Seven suspicious persons or vehi- or vehicles, one house check and fourteen assist to other agencies. Um, I think if I have anything else here to update you all on, um, I, you know, I mean, uh, you know, look, we're, we're almost through March here. Um, we got through the winter, um, which is good. Didn't snow too much, didn't have too much in overtime. I mean, obviously that's not good for our guys. I'm sure they weren't too happy about that. Um, but, uh, certainly, um, you know, it was good for us, um, as a town and we are, uh, you know, we're gonna be looking in the months ahead to start getting the grounds back into shape, um, as the weather gets nicer. So, you know, we're gonna be doing a lot of work in that, in that, uh, regard. Um, you know, uh, we also have the Main Street Bridge Project that is, the, the county's gonna be bidding out that project. So they say on March thirty-first. Hopefully that happens. Um, but they have a very aggressive timeline, um, where they're gonna be starting in June. I don't really think that's gonna be the case. I think it's more likely into the summer, early fall when they'll be starting. So the, the, you know, the timeline keeps getting pushed back, obviously, but, um, you know, we're, uh, working with the businesses to try to come up with a plan because they are, even though two lanes of traffic are gonna be open, which is really good. People still tend to avoid construction areas, so we're gonna need to do a little, you know, as much as we can to, to encourage residents to wanna come to the downtown area because nobody likes construction, um, even if there's two lanes that are open. So we're gonna be working with the chamber on that. Um, let me see, anything else here? Um, is there anything else from board members? No? Okay. Um, public comment? Yes?
Lucille, Jean, Mallory Avenue. I just got a few quick things here on the parking study. Um, I don't know what everybody else feels, but we pay enough in tax, so we need to pay some part because that's gonna be a detriment um, to Main Street because there's a lot of people who are not gonna do that and can't afford to do it and don't have apps on their phones, especially the elderly folks. Um, I have, I have, you know, a smartphone, but I'm certainly not gonna put that on my phone. Um, there's issues with security. Um, I think there's no consideration of people with disabilities, uh, for Main Street parking. I know there's a federal law that for X amount of spots, you have to have uh, uh, one disabled parking, um, location. There's only three on Main Street, one in a private lot and one by hazard and one in front of Randy Clark's place. So I'm really concerned about, about that. Um, there's, uh, I, and I, I know this is, you know, I'm beating a dead horse. Um, but I think that the town needs to go back and work with the Hays to get the, um, municipal lot back. The farm, I understand that the, the caboose or wherever that building is that's in the farm market parking lot that's only supposed to be there when there's an event, but it's parked there all the time, taking up three spaces. Um, um, the, my last comment is, I'm concerned about everything that's going on, what's being funded, what's not being funded. And A, is there a list of open projects that have not been, um, um, you know, agreed to or pushed forward? And I'm wondering how much is left of the ARPA funds? Because every meeting I attend, I hear about this money being spent and maybe the ARPA funds could, can be used. And so do we know what's left or is that something you can share with?
I, I, I actually gave that tonight in my report, the amount of money that we had left after we had, um, applied. So what we did is we had projects that we, throughout twenty twenty-two, we said, we're going to apply ARPA for these projects. But you do that after you make the expenditure. You pay it out of, you know, the general fund or whatever fund it's, the project's coming out of. We're now in the time of year when we're closing out our books before, before we do the audit. And so we go back and all the projects that we said, that we've said throughout the year, like the parking study or the the gazebo or sidewalks or whatever, and we went back now before the audit, um, was finished. We said, okay, so we said that in twenty twenty-two, we had these projects which were listed. They're online. We then went and we took that money. I think, I think it was what, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And we then, uh, we applied it. So now we're down, I, I don't have it in front of me. It's like
Five hundred and seventy-six.
Five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So now what's gonna happen is the town board, um, over this year and next, because we have until December thirty-first of twenty-four to spend it. We will decide throughout the year what projects we wanna spend that money on. We will expend it out of the general fund or maybe it's through bonding or whatever. We will then, next year, that money that we said that we were gonna apply. We will then, next year, that money that we said that we were gonna apply ARPA to, we will go in, and we will do the same thing, and we will apply the ARPA, that, that's generally how...
And then supply after the fact, after?
Did, well, yes, because you're basically, you have to spend it first, because ARPA sits in a separate account.
Right.
So, you spend the money first, then after you've spent it, and it's complete, you then, what the board did tonight was authorize moving the money over from the ARPA account to cover the expenditure in the general fund, or whatever. That's, that's how we've...
Thank you. And, and I forgot one last thing, and then I promise I won't say anything more tonight. Um, the four-point million dollars from the grant, that's between the village and the town.
Four point five, yeah.
Yeah. Did I say four? I thought I said four, did it four point five?
Yeah.
That's what I thought I said. Um, how is that gonna be, how is the town gonna get their part of it? And do we know what, when that four point five million is gonna be received by the village and the town, and how it's gonna be dispersed? Is it gonna be dispersed the same as ARPA, or can they be used immediately?
Yeah, I mean, that, so, so, um, the way this is gonna work is, and I actually spoke about this last week, at, at, at last week's work session. Um, but the way this works is, we don't actually receive the money split in half between two municipalities. What happens is, there's going to be a local planning committee, um, that is going to work over the next seven months. By the summer, um, the, the town and the village, myself and the mayor, and, you know, uh, different town staff will be working with, um, different, um, we've been assigned, um, project managers from the Department of State. This is their project. There's also people been assigned from Empire State Development, Department of Homes and Community Renewal. Um, they've assigned us project managers. They're also going to give us consultants that will help guide the town and the village on this process. And the goal is gonna be to come up with a strategic investment plan, um, that'll be put together, that some of the projects that were submitted in the initial proposal that the state funded, those are possible projects. There's also gonna be a call for projects from the public, so you're gonna be able to have, um, residents put in projects, you're gonna be able to have businesses, nonprofits, they're gonna be able to put in projects. The local planning committee, working with the state, 'cause this, this is actually a, a, a state, the, the state has a huge input into this, they are going to help us put together the strategic, um, funding plan, which will have all of these projects. It's not just gonna be for four point five million. They want you to basically come up with three, four, or five times that amount of projects. So, this way, the town really plans, and the town and the village plan for their future. And then, the, the state will say, okay, this is, this is acceptable to us, this strategic funding plan. Um, and then, there will then be a process that we work through to decide, okay, so, you know, let's say it's fifteen million dollars of projects, okay, well, we have four point five million dollars for this strategic funding plan. Um, this project maybe gets two hundred thousand, this one gets five hundred, this one gets a million, this one gets fifty, this one gets this. This one, um, doesn't get funded by New York Forward, this one maybe is a different state program that we're applying to. This is, um, maybe we're borrowing to pay for this one. Maybe this is tax levy, maybe this is, you know, ARPA's gonna pay for this. But it's basically a roadmap for the town and village to follow for a period of time, which we will have four point five million to spend, but the state's gonna decide which projects that four point five goes to. So, they're, they're, they're with us the whole way. I mean, pretty much, let's just say, from now and for the next two years.
So, with the committees you're talking about, is there any, any resident input on that, or is it just non-residents who are involved?
No, so, so, so they're, so the local planning committee, when we submitted the grant application, we had to submit some, you know, some names of, of residents, um, uh, names of village and town residents. The village got to submit some, the town got to submit some, we submitted with the grant application. The state has to approve who's gonna be on the committee, they have to vet everyone. They don't want conflicts of interest, they don't want people that are gonna be sitting on the, um, committee that's gonna work on a plan, that's then also gonna seek funding. So, they wanna make sure there's no conflicts. So, what's gonna happen is, they're going to look at the initial list that was submitted with the grant application. They're gonna say, okay, this is sufficient, this is not, we want more people. I mean, I, I have said this, if people want to, are interested in being on the committee, certainly, send me, um, you know, uh, you know, uh, an email or a letter. It doesn't mean you're gonna get on, because, again, the state decides who gets on the committee. They, 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 they wanna make sure that the committee has balance, that it, that it has certain areas, that are gonna, you know, be able to, you know, deal with certain questions, that there's no conflicts, they're doing all the vetting on this. So, you know, certainly, if people are interested, um, because, you know, look, it's also possible people fall off the committee along the way, and we'll have to put new people on. So, anyone that wants to submit, I mean, I have, you know...
Could I possibly suggest that we could continue this, and we can take this later?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I...
Private setting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I think, I just, I want, I wanna just answer these, you know, New York Forward questions, because I think they're pretty...
Right, she wants an answer to those questions.
I think, you know, this is, 'cause residents wanna know about New York Forward.
This could be a long process.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, very long process. And, and, look, I'm happy to talk to you further, and the other thing is that, um, we will be, stuff will be coming out, the process will be starting in April, so there will be a lot of information that's gonna come out. Um, I promise you, it's just, it's been, like, the state has a lot to do with this, so I can only move as fast as they move.
Well, they're looking, they're looking for local, like, local funding too, so it's not just, like, the state is giving four point five million dollars. We're gonna have to come up with some matching funds, and then, is it a pri- private investments too?
So...
Is that how it works?
So, what I would say is that there's gonna be some projects that are fully paid out of the four point five. Then, there's gonna be other projects that, that residents, or the town board, or whoever, wanna do, that make it into the plan. But maybe they're like five million dollar projects.
Yeah.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna spend all the four point five on one project. They wanna have, like, a multiplier effect. So, there may be things in there, like, maybe there's a sewer project that has to happen, that we're gonna apply for a WEA grant, right, to fund. Maybe there's a project that we're gonna apply to Empire State Development for. But it's, it's basically gonna be a roadmap. Um...
I get it.
Also, to answer your question about the parking, I know before, so, uh, you know, uh, handicap parking, I'm, I'm definitely, I'm looking to that, and I'm sure that I just don't correct it, 'cause I, I agree with you, just, I don't correct it on Main Street. It's outdated, it's definitely outdated.
And I do have the federal law at home, 'cause I had to do this for the...
I know, I, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, thank you.
We added the handicap spots when we repaved, when the county repaved.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we actually, yeah, we actually added some more. So, I mean, certainly, that, you know, that, that's a, there's definitely more than three.
Possible, more than three.
But we, we'll certainly look, I mean, if there's a certain balance that we have to have, a certain amount that we, you know, that we're required to have, I mean, it's a matter of what, restructuring them?
What's really hard too is where they're supposed to be lined up.
They have curb cuts, too.
Curb cuts, they're supposed to be lined up where the sidewalk ends, and not in the middle spots, for both parallel parking.
So, that, it's not just a matter of...
To where to put them.
No, I, I hear you.
Yeah.
I, I know it's not an issue.
Thank you, Josh.
So, we'll, we'll certainly look into that. I mean, and, look, and as far as the, the paying for parking piece of this, I, I, I don't think, um, I, I think where the board's at right now is that we're gonna do the enforcement piece. And I think that's a first step, to see how that changes behavior. Will that free up spots in, in front of cer-, I mean, I know it's gonna, in front of certain places, 'cause I know people that currently park there all day now, so, I'm sure it's gonna free up some spots. As far as the paid parking piece, that was just something, we asked them to give us every single option that was available, and it's kinda like, take it or leave it. And it sounds like the public doesn't want us to do it, um, at least from what we're hearing. So, we're gonna start with the enforcement, and we'll see where that goes. Um, okay, I know that was a long answer. Yes?
Um, is there anything updated on, Joe, we say, oh, is there any update on the D E C sewer soil test for that, for that project you had normal approvals of paying there?
Um, so, actually, the, um, yeah, the town, uh, uh, approved us hiring the firm, um, last week. They were actually out on site today, taking soil samples. They were also on site over at, um, Canterbury as well, because they had the same, so they are taking soil samples. We have to determine what it is. Once we determine what it is, then that determines the disposal method. Um, we will, it'll take anywhere from, you know, three to five days plus to get the results back. Once we get them back, then we'll know what we have to do. Um, if I recall from the agreement, it was two hundred and sixty dollars a ton to dispose of the petroleum-type dirt that would be on burnakers. Um, but... No, none, no, they tested today. Um, and they, they've yet to, but, as you may recall, though, the town board had asked, so we, uh, we are looking into insurance coverage. There's also the requirement that the property owner, they, right, they're responsible for...
Property owner's strictly liable.
Yeah, so, but, in order to, the reason why the town is doing this is because if you wait for the property owner to do the testing and do the remediation, we still have an obligation to the sewer contractor that every day they're not working, it's seventy-five hundred dollars a day in de-mobilization costs. So, we need to kinda speed this along, and then, this way, we don't incur a hundred thousand dollars in those costs. Um, and then, uh, we will be working with the property owner to make sure that they, you know, reimburse the town for the cost.
I don't wanna get into it in any great detail, but since it is in the town's right-of-way, the town shares some responsibility to claim over against the owner.
So, that's...
What if the, the contractor, that actually caused the issue by breaking into tanks or breaking source?
They didn't break any tanks.
They didn't break into the tank?
No, just found it in the soil.
Just found it in the soil.
Some years ago.
Okay, yeah, so, anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll know more about this, um, I would say, early next week, we'll then.
Just a little girls.
Sure, yes.
Hi, my name's James Hellbig, I've been here before. Uh, I live over at Rustic Ridge, my property borders Boulder Drive. Uh, I'm here again to complain about number eleven. Uh, as you know, uh, the organization Rayim of the Hudson Valley has a, or had a camp up at twenty-nine Boulder Drive. Uh, since late twenty twenty, and throughout twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and continuing into twenty twenty-three, uh, number eleven Boulder Drive has been running an after-school daycare center. Uh, the house is owned now, as of twenty twenty-two, by a gentleman named David Bloom, who, like Israel Kraus at Illegal Camp Edithum, is an employee of Rayim. And for the last three years, I watch every day after school as the Rayim bus comes up with several handicap, physically and mentally disabled children, and runs their after-school day camp up there. Uh, they have also started using number thirty-five. Pretty much, all of Boulder Drive is a Rayim project at this point. Um, I've come to the board, I've written emails to Gary, I guess it is, and, uh, nothing's changed. So, I don't know if you guys have ever sent out a cease and desist. I'm pretty sure no one has ever gone up and looked at the property, knocked on the door. Um, I, I went online, and I found some information from our lawsuit against, uh, Israel Special Camp Edithum and Rayim. And this bullet point says here that a camp means adult supervision, paid or unpaid, of three or more unrelated minors, or paid adult supervision of three or more related minors, excuse me, for the purpose of childcare, recreation, education, therapy sessions, or group activities of any kind on the property. According to this, the property is twenty-nine Boulder Drive. Pretty much what they've done is just moved it all down to number eleven. So, I'm really hoping somebody will, will do something about it. Go up there, just a cease and desist letter, go knock on a door at four o'clock on any day except for Friday and Saturday, and see what's going on up there. If, if you're concerned about going on someone's private property, the town garage borders the properties also. You go to the back of the town garage, I'm sure you can see everything that's going on, even more than I can see, because they started hiding their bus now behind the garage, and they, they think they're getting away with stuff. Um, I've been taking pictures and taking videos for the last, since, since twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Uh, I do appreciate everything you all have done with twenty-nine Boulder Drive, that's really kinda slowed things down up there. Uh, we'll see if that holds all throughout the summer or not, but it's, it's non-stop. It, there is not a single family living on Boulder Drive any longer. It is just men and vans, children, and special needs people. Um, and it's just become a, a giant organization, a giant, uh, money-making, uh, process for, for Rayim. Not that you're interested in any of this, but in twenty seventeen, Rayim's budget was fourteen million dollars. Ninety-nine percent of it comes from Medicaid. In twenty twenty-one, their budget was nearly sixty-one million. Now, I'm not saying all of that's coming from running a camp, or running an illegal daycare, or whatever else they're doing up there, but it's really kinda getting out of control up there. So, I'm, I'm really hoping that, that there's something you can do, something you might look into, and just kinda see if we put an end to it.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Well, we can get together with Gary and, and Mr. Hellbig, if you like, and see what there is. You know we sent a cease and desist order. Uh, you could send another letter if you want, but, I mean, it's been a matter of proof up until now, really.
I'm sorry, if you want, I got three hundred and ninety-six pictures and videos dating back to twenty, sorry, to the old gen- but dating back to twenty twenty. I, I don't go out looking for it. My kitchen window, I'm washing dishes, three-thirty in the afternoon, four o'clock, there they come. If I'm in my living room, there they are. If I'm upstairs in my bedroom, I just have to walk past the window, five o'clock in the afternoon, there they are. Virginia's seen it numerous times, coming out of Boulder Drive. She's one of the only ones actually who's ever come up and taken a look at what's going on. Um, so, I don't know if you, have you ever sent number eleven specifically, a, a, a cease and desist letter, or is it basically for a gentleman?
Uh, the, uh, the, uh, council for, uh...
Rayim?
Yeah, for Rayim.
Well, this, this gentleman's name is David, David Bloom, and he purchased the property in twenty twenty-two. Um, he doesn't live there, nobody actually lives there. It's, it's really wild to watch. You can see the van with the kids, packs up and leaves, and then, two minutes later, comes employee number one, employee number two, employee number three, and then the place goes dark, and nobody's on Boulder Drive all night long.
If, if it's the board's pleasure, then, you know, we can get together with you and, and Gary, and maybe Josh, I don't know, and, you know, see what, where the facts stand.
I appreciate that.
And if the board's inclined, we could commence code enforcement proceedings.
Code enforcement, yeah, I mean, I know you guys hired a new zoning lady or a code enforcement woman, so...
No, this would go be, you go to court.
You go to court, yeah.
Appreciate it, I, thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, Steve, we'll get that going.
You wanna do that?
Yeah. All right, um, unless there's, uh, no additional public comment, um, do you wanna check with Sally to see if she's still up there, Roxanne? Okay, um, yeah, we actually have, um, if we could get a, a motion to go into executive session, um, to, uh, to conduct an interview for a board, uh, or committee position.
Somewhere.
Also, close session to seek advice of counsel.
Yes, also close session to seek the advice of counsel.
I have a spot here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Michael Razi?
Yes.
Yes, and actually, I think we gotta stay down here, because...